I will call to order the work session, Willsville City Council of December 1st, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I will start by asking council members for review of the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, are there any council concerns before we begin our pre-council work session? Ready to go?
All ready now, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, everyone, I'm Nicole Underwood with Echo Northwest. I believe Beth Goodman should be joining us online. And then obviously, I've got Cindy and Matt with the city with me as well. And so this evening, we're looking for your input on two citywide work products that support the Wilsonville industrial land readiness project. So as a reminder, the industrial land readiness project has two tracks, one focused on Basalt Creek and one citywide. You've seen the Basalt Creek in previous work sessions, and in the August work session, we came to you with some preliminary citywide findings, including the buildable lands inventory and the employment forecasts. And so tonight, we're going to focus on a recap of the EOA conclusions and then spend most of our time working through the economic development strategy. So as you can see here, we're nearing the end of this project. Engagement and technical analysis is complete. This is our second citywide works, or city council work session. And then after this session, we're going to take your feedback, finalize the EOA and the economic development strategy, and we plan to have adoption hearings early next year. And so as I said, we're going to start by walking through the EOA conclusions, and then we're going to shift to a discussion of the strategy. So, back in August, we presented the buildable lands inventory and economic inventory to city council, and we asked for your feedback on which employment growth rate to use. The council agreed to use the Oregon Employment Department's regional forecast rate, and so that's the methodology that we applied. Using that forecast, Wilsonville is expected to add about 6,100 jobs by 2046. This translates to a need of roughly 320 acres of industrial land and 110 acres of commercial land. So the main takeaways from the EOA are here. Wilsonville has enough industrial land to support this growth, but unlocking it will take focused effort. Near-term development is limited by challenges like small parcel sizes, fragmented ownership, and lack of urban-level infrastructure in key areas like Basalt Creek. On the commercial side, vacant land is limited, but there's substantial redevelopment opportunities, especially in town center. There are also several large vacant buildings, including the former Albertsons, Regal Cinemas, and Fry's Electronics, that present near-term opportunities for reuse. And so before we shift to the economic development strategy, I did just want to pause and see if the council had any feedback about the EOA or any areas that needed clarification before we move on.
Seeing none, go ahead.
Awesome, all right. So we're going to move right into the economic development strategy. So as we go through this 10-year strategy, we want to keep these questions at the top of your mind. Are these the desired economic outcomes, the right ones to focus on in the strategy? Does the strategy include the right mix of actions? Are we missing any? And given limited resources, should any actions be elevated or deprioritized? So we started this process by identifying six desired outcomes that define long-term economic success for Wilsonville over the next 10 years, and I'm just going to read them so that we're all aligned. Basalt Creek and Coffee Creek show considerable momentum, building out with high-quality, high-value development, and are home to employers that provide strong job opportunities. Town Center is redeveloping with active retail, housing, and civic spaces. Zoning and infrastructure investments balance the need of residents and target industries. Retail and restaurant offerings are expanded, including more locally-owned and experience-oriented businesses. Employment opportunities and wages have increased. And Wilsonville is recognized regionally for advanced industrial employment, quality of life, and high-caliber customer service. So these are the desired outcomes that we're looking to achieve with the actions in the So as a part of this process, we conducted engagement. This included a technical advisory committee that was made up of regional economic development partners, along with some interviews with local business owners, property owners, and developers. Across the conversations, we heard some themes. Employers are struggling to find workers with the right skills, and there's a growing need to, for upskilling. Businesses also face tight space and land constraints, and high rents and tenant improvement costs create barriers for smaller companies. We also heard about a retail market gap, so residents are leaving Wilsonville to access services they can't find locally. And then lastly, we heard from some businesses and developers that expressed a desire for more proactive partnership with the city, particularly around navigating regulations, accessing resources, and really finding a path to yes. So from that engagement and technical work, we identified six key focus areas. Each represents a point of leverage where the city can make progress through investment, policy, and partnership. The strategy is built around these areas with specific actions tied to each one, which we're going to go through next. For every action, we've outlined whether it could be done with current resources or needs new ones, and when it would happen. We've grouped actions into near-term, which are doable in the next one to five years, and then longer-term actions, six to 10 years, that depend on that additional funding or So focus area one is really about industrial land readiness. We've got five actions here, most of which you can see can begin in the near term with existing staff and resources. The first action is to launch a land aggregation and resale program in Coffee Creek. This would use Urban Renewal and Business Oregon's regionally significant industrial site program to assemble parcels from willing sellers and shape them into market-ready sites. I know this concept has already been introduced to council and received some early positive feedback. The section, the second action is a feasibility study for an urban renewal area in Basalt Creek. This could mean expanding the existing Coffee Creek urban renewal area or creating a new one, and this builds on some of the work the city is already undertaking. The third action is really about working with Washington County to address the approval of contractor establishments in Basalt Creek that do not align with the vision for the area. The fourth action is to evaluate and design a toolkit for infrastructure financing, options like local improvement districts, public cost sharing, or grants. This effort could begin now and grow with, over time, as needs evolve. And then finally, that fifth action is to promote the city's most development-ready industrial sites. So while promotion could start earlier, it will be more impactful once you have some of these groundwork actions in place. Focus area two addresses the funding gap that exists outside of that Coffee Creek urban renewal area. So the strategy proposes establishing a dedicated revenue source to support commercial and mixed-use redevelopment, particularly in town center. That could include evaluating tools like a town center urban renewal area, or business improvement districts, or other mechanisms that can fund infrastructure amenities or redevelopment efforts. And so this focus area also connects to 1.2 and 1.4 that we covered on the previous Focus area three addresses the limited supply of vacant commercial land. It really focuses on reuse and redevelopment. Key actions here include consider expanding allowable non-retail commercial uses in select industrial areas, coordinating with other departments on town center and tourism priorities, and then catalyzing redevelopment of key sites in town center. So this last action is likely a longer-term action and would require a new funding source. It could leverage a funding source like the one we described in 2.1. So focus area four is about enhancing Wilsonville's unique retail and dining options. This was a common theme in engagement. And just a note here that some of these actions do come from your existing town center plan and your tourism development strategy. This is intentional, as many of those actions really support the same outcomes we're talking about here. And so rather than just adding additional actions, we really wanted to elevate and integrate the existing actions into this plan. So action 4.1 recommends offering targeted incentives in town center to attract small, locally-owned businesses. These could include grants, reduced fees, or tenant improvement assistance. The city could be in this work now with existing resources and expand if a new funding source becomes available. 4.2 and 4.3 are more specific. Action 4.2 looks at the creation of a food cart incubation program in town center, and 4.3 is about exploring affordable commercial space models or potential partnerships to support small business growth. So both of these ideas could be explored with current resources, but implementation would likely take new funding or committed partners. And then finally, 4.4 focuses on recruiting unique restaurants and shops to town center. This is likely a longer-term effort. Successful improvement, recruitment would likely depend on having some of those incentives in place. So focus area five is about workforce. The key action here is for the city to take a more active role in shaping regional workforce efforts. This is about convening and collaboration. This means working with employers, schools, workforce, development organizations to make sure that Wilsonville's needs are really elevated and reflected in regional programs and partnerships. And then focus area six is about supporting small businesses. So one action here is strengthening city communication with and supports for businesses. This includes acting as a resource connector and, where appropriate, making city processes easier to navigate. Staff already does this today, but it could be scaled up depending upon council priorities. And then the last action we've got listed is offering small business grants. So for example, energy efficiency grants or facade improvements. This would require identifying a new funding source, so it is considered a longer-term So we did go to Planning Commission a few weeks back, and their feedback has been shared in Attachment 3 of your packet. I did elevate two areas here that are particularly important for council to consider as we move forward. And so Planning Commission identified the following priorities. They prioritized actions that make land development ready, and they also thought that identifying a dedicated funding source for implementation should be a priority as well. We also had one commissioner express concern over allowing non-retail commercial uses in industrial areas, since it can use up valuable industrial land. They suggested limiting recreational commercial uses and placing greater emphasis on employment-oriented uses such as office. They suggested that might be more appropriate. And so that gets us to the discussion portion, just re-elevating these questions. We want to hear from you whether these are the right economic outcomes that we should be focusing on. If so, do the strategies include the right mix of actions? Are there any that are missing? And then specific to action 3.1, should the city allow non-retail commercial, should the city explore allowing non-retail commercial uses in select industrial areas such as commercial recreation or standalone office to help address the limited supply of vacant commercial land? And then the last, but not least, given limited resources, should any actions be elevated or deprioritized?
Counsel? Excuse me.
Thank you. I appreciate that the land aggregation, that section, that Planning Commission touched on the land, the readiness of the land development was, you know, bullet point number one. I think that that's maybe one of the most important things on here. It struck me when, I'm trying to figure out which page it was on, it was, but there was that chart that showed how much industrial development has occurred in the South Metro area. It feels like we're kind of falling behind. It's on page 56. And anything that we can do, I love that we came up with that idea for Coffee Creek, that we're going to help that aggregation, and we're finding partners for that. That, to me personally, is probably the top priority among all of this, if we can figure out how to get past those roadblocks. It seems, it seems like that's the roadblock that keeps coming up in these conversations for that industrial development. One of the things, I think it was mentioned somewhere through the packet, but it didn't really come up here in the presentation, on Section 1.2, 2.2, talking about a Basalt Creek urban renewal district. What does it look like to possibly expand the Coffee Creek urban renewal district into Basalt Creek and start to be able to push some of that development with that?
Yeah, Matt, I'll let you talk about that one.
So there are statutory limitations on how much an urban renewal area can be expanded with regard to percentages of acreage. So using round numbers, well, actually, we don't need to use round numbers, we can just use the percentages. 20% is the greatest amount you can grow your acreage without needing to establish an entirely new area. So the Coffee Creek urban renewal area is roughly 250 acres, so we're only able to add about 50 additional acres to that area. That's, that might be enough, but it's likely not. But if we were surgical about it and we're only targeting right-of-way, for example, that needed to be approved, and perhaps specific property that we know will likely develop in the near term, and that the increment generated by that development could then serve to build out infrastructure to serve the balance of the area, we just haven't studied it fully yet, but that's the, that's the limitation we're looking at, is that 20% on the acreage for expanding Coffee Creek.
Are there any properties or any possible developments identified in the Basalt Creek area that might match that amount that we could, a near-term development that we know is on the horizon, or someone that's seriously looking at?
Yeah, so there's a major developer that's aggregated about 50 acres in Basalt Creek, and they are anxious to develop. Unless there's major macroeconomic changes, we assume at this point that they'll continue to move toward that goal. So, just so happens that that's a 50-acre site, and that 20% is 50 acres. Maybe it would be a portion of that site, maybe, you know, like, I'm not sure exactly how it would work out, but to answer your question briefly, yes, there is at least one major development that we think could pop within the foreseeable future.
Great.
In Basalt Creek.
Can you go back to Section 1 slides? And then I'll turn it over after this one. I'll probably come back with a couple other things, though. Yeah. Action 1.3, I was looking at that in the packet, and it seems interesting, you know, the two, it seems like there's two options there, either kind of continue to just coordinate directly with Washington County, or kind of get Washington County to kind of let us run with this. If we were able to go with that latter option, would that help expedite things? What would be the benefits of kind of taking over that process from, or changing that process?
I'm going to see if Beth has any thoughts on this one. Beth, we're talking about the, I'm trying to pull it up on my computer, it's the, if the city had control over the planning area as opposed to the county.
Well, I'm actually going to reflect this back to Matt in a moment. But my thought on this is, what's the county bringing with them? Are they bringing resources that helps? If not, then more control might be desirable, or maybe Matt wants something else.
I'm going to recruit Cindy in a second, so we're just going to keep passing this hot potato. I mean, it's a land use question, and so we should have a land use planner address it, but from my perspective, if, even if the city were to become the entity to process applications for county unincorporated property, we would still be implementing their policies, not the city's policies. So it helps us only in one regard, and that is, we can ensure that where there's coordination with the city required, that that's actually happening. That hasn't been the case in the past. There have been section, there have been developments that have been approved by the county without consulting with the city appropriately. So that's the only way it really benefits us directly, is we can ensure that all of those details are not missed. We'd still be implementing county policies, not the city's.
I honestly don't have a whole lot to add to that. I mean, that would be the situation, but it would give us a little bit more control.
Perfect, okay.
The other approach here, which I don't think staff is necessarily advocating for, would be to have contractor establishments allowed in the city's codes, and that would give these contractor establishments a path toward compliance and coming into the city. But ultimately, the goal for these areas, according to our master plans and our strategic documents, all of our adopted plans, is to see urban industrial development in these areas and not really facilitate a path to see the perpetuation of these lower-value uses.
Sure, thank you.
Counselor Shavlin.
Thank you. I really enjoyed reading through the packet. There's so much information in there. It was fantastic. My first question has to do with the industrial land development in relation to, we, in the packet, we read a lot about chip development and tech, and yet with the layoffs in Intel in Washington County, do we really believe that that is still a growing industry in this area? Or will there be, what do we expect when we think our industrial sites will be, could they really be used for chip development? Or is that something that seems to be waning in this area?
Before I chime in, I want to get Nicole's perspective, because she has so much exposure to the region.
I don't think we were fully thinking, I mean, I think that when we had done the Basalt Creek work, we were thinking of it as a supportive area, not fabrication per se. But it certainly, I mean, we're seeing it across, it certainly has slowed down. I don't think that has diminished the demand for industrial land. We have such a shortage in the metro region that I don't think you will see, I think there's plenty of demand for the land. Whether it will be for tech-related, that might be a short-term flip. You may not have that in the near term. But I don't, I don't think overall it impacts your ability to attract manufacturing and different types of uses that were outlined previously as well. Beth, I welcome your thoughts on this as well, if you want to add anything.
Well, you just said what I wanted to say, which is partially, one, don't get focused overly on one industry, because industries change, and we're talking about, you know, at the very least, a five-to-10-year timeframe. And two, I echo everything that Nicole just said about need for industrial land, especially industrial land that's served, of course.
So the bottom line is that there's enough product to go around in tech. It may not be chips per se, but things will change.
Yeah, I think, I mean, some of the other industries we highlighted were around clean tech as opposed to chip, and so I don't think those are going away.
And there's other advanced manufacturing that would really want to locate where you are because of your location within the region. Even though you get some pretty fierce traffic backups, it's still better than a lot of locations.
Thank you. And if it's all right, Mayor, I had another comment, and that's in regards to our location. We all tend to look at I-5 as being a hindrance to us, especially when we're trying to get around town in certain peak hours. But when we look at Interstate 5 and what it brings to our community in the way of, one, all the workers that are coming in, 18,000 or so, I think, 19 perhaps now, that migrate into work, thank goodness that they can take an interstate to get here, if that's the way that they're moving in and out of our city. And then just the transportation issues for product. So I know that it, we tend to look at it as a negative, because we, until we get the Boone Bridge rebuilt, it creates a lot of problems, and it still may. It's not going to be the perfect fix to our crowded streets at peak hours. But I decided to put my rose-colored glasses on and decide that I-5 was maybe more of a positive than perhaps we realize sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Berry.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for the report. I also enjoyed reading it. So I have a question on the slide that we're looking at right now, action 1.1, talking about the resale program in Coffee Creek using urban renewal and RSIS. Can you give us a little bit more information about the RSIS program?
Matt, if you want to take that one.
Yeah, so it's a program through Business Oregon, the state's economic development agency, and it allows for cities and counties to be reimbursed for expenses incurred in preparing industrial sites. Some of those activities are infrastructure-related. There's also a category of eligible activities that has to do with land assembly. And so we'd be looking at using that eligibility path to, or I should say, we are looking at that, to, and I think we did talk to the council a little bit about this, but it's been a little while, so it's time for an update. The program would allow us to use urban renewal to purchase property, aggregate property, hold property, and then resell at a fair reuse value, which is likely lower than our purchase price, and then seek reimbursement for the difference between our purchase price and our sale price through the RSIS program in the state of Oregon. Where we are today with that process is, we have drafted amendment documents to the Coffee Creek urban renewal plan, and we have a draft amendment to our contract with the state of Oregon under the RISIS program, the RSIS program. And so we'll be bringing those documents to the Urban Renewal Task Force and eventually to council in the first quarter of next year. And if the council continues to support that process and that project, then we'd be in a position later in 2026 to start looking if there are properties that would meet our criteria.
Thank you. That was a good refresher. Also, so for the report, like, I agree with everything that is in the report and with the Planning Commission, I concur with their ideas. I am a little worried about transportation and the infrastructure. I didn't really see a whole lot of information on that. Is that, I know that we, in the past, we've talked about that the West Railroad property roadway might need a lot of attention and a lot of dollars, but are there other areas that we should be, you know, focusing in on that could be expensive for this plan?
I, just the West Railroad is what's really been on my mind, so.
Yeah, me as well, the undercrossing at Graham's.
Yeah. Are you, are you asking, are there big-ticket items that we want to be thinking about, or are you thinking more generally?
Kind of general. I mean, because we're talking about, there's a lot of small parcels, and so we might have to adjust some of the property lines and make bigger lot adjustments, but are there, like, trans, you know, like roadway costs, big roadway costs that, like, what I'm thinking is, in the town center, a lot of the roads are going to be rerouted, right? Relocated. Are we doing that in this area, too? Or just, like, you have a property and now we'll just upgrade it for a new development?
I think I understand your question better now. So as these areas develop, Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek, those areas we're discussing, I just want to make sure, okay.
Yeah.
So local roads, in almost all cases, will be constructed by the developer at the time of development. And it might just be a section of road, but as the area fills in, those roads become connected. That's true in town center as well, local roads are built by development. But then, as this activity, as this area becomes more vibrant, as there's more activity, then there's more burden on regional, not regional, but area intersections, and then larger arterial roads, and those become capital projects of the city. And our engineers fortunately have planned ahead, and those projects are identified in the Coffee Creek master plan, and they're identified in the Basalt Creek work that we're doing as well.
Okay, so no big surprises.
We know what the projects are, we don't know how to pay for them yet, but we know what the projects are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Skoll.
Well, I had a couple of questions, but Counsel Barry asked one regarding transportation. I'm also concerned about the transportation there because, you know, back looking at the maps from the planning commission time, I understand how the inbound and outbound traffic's going to flow, but we're crossing over county lines. And also, there's the city of Twolleton and the city of Wilsonville involved there, and kind of concerned about the coordination of all that at one time, or actually, as we go over time. So, but I think you answered some of that, so. Good report. I like what's here. I've seen this a couple of times. The one thing I want to focus on is Action 5.1 regarding the business struggles to follow, to find qualified workers. You know, if you're building a warehouse, if someone's going to have a logistics center or something like that, finding employees is actually fairly simple and easy. But when it comes to industrial or manufacturing, it's a different story. I came out of the manufacturing industry here, is retired in 2022, and from 2016 to 2022, we couldn't find skilled workers. And then when, and we went to the colleges to recruit and everything, the skilled workers wanted to go program or code rather than weld or fabricate or run a machine and everything. And so I think that's a critical factor that will need to be addressed as we move through this process. And when we talked about the other, the railroad section, one of the comments I made there was, you know, some kind of a vocational school opportunity in that area or whatever to help promote that, so that, and place that right in the area so that, you know, graduates could go, or people, they could go in, go to school, graduate, and actually network out into the businesses into the area. So that would be my comment on the existing resources and future resources.
I would just add that, from my perspective, that's why it's so important to have those strong connections with OIT, Clackis Community College, as we develop the next generation of workforce in the community. And to add to Counselor Chevlin's comments, we have ninety-one percent of our workforce comes here, and we benefit from I-5, so I agree with that. But key for me, these educational institutes reflect the next generation of workers that will stay, hopefully, in Wilsonville and achieve that next generation of industry for all of us. And so I think that's something to think about.
Counselor Chevlin.
I have another comment, and it really hooks onto what Mayor just said. And that's in regards to the projected eighteen percent increase in jobs, or, which is six thousand one hundred and thirty-two people, more or less, if you, over twenty years. That's still, if, on average, three hundred extra jobs a year, and we have to have housing for these folks as well. So if they're single people, then affordable housing in what we've designed in town center is the perfect type of dwelling for many of those people to be able to, you know, one-in-two member households that can start their career here and start their homeownership here, and then be able to move up through the system and be able to acquire bigger homes as families begin, et cetera. But that's why it's so important, in my opinion, to have the housing that we need in the town center close in. So whether they're a student that's finishing their college career and moving on then and wanting to stay in Wilsonville, which is exactly what we hope for, we want to be able to accommodate that. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, on the 5.1 front, I recently had a meeting with our chamber president, and there's some exciting stuff that they're working on over there to help facilitate some of that job training stuff and to get into the schools and try to figure out how they can be a partner with creating some of these job skills. And I know that my, at Wilsonville High School, we actually just got a recent email that offered a bulging program over the next several weeks. So it sounds like there's some work being done there, and I hope that that can continue and snowball and get bigger. The other thing that came up a lot in the packet, I didn't see a lot of it here in the presentation, it was talking about one of the roadblocks being electricity and power. I know that earlier this year, this council clarified our understanding of our code about transmission lines, and I'm hoping that that doesn't come back and bite us and create an issue where we're not getting transmission lines built that are coming in to help serve these areas and make sure that we have the power we need for some of these, you know, big users of utilities. I understand that, you know, the Coffey Creek, the building that was built over in Coffey Creek, that, a big inhibitor on that was that it was built, but there wasn't enough electricity for a lot of users that were looking for it. So, you know, I'm not sure if that's something that we're going to need to go back and revisit, but it seems to me like that could end up coming back and being a little bit more of a roadblock here, so. The last thing, it sounded like you wanted a little bit more on 3.1, so if you could slide over to that one. You kind of mentioned, so this is talking about the non-retail uses. I think you kind of mentioned, like, gyms. Would that be like, you know, you're driving up, you know, to Beaverton, and you see, like, the CrossFit gym over in the industrial area, or like, I've taken my kid to, like, the blow-up slides kind of places, is that kind of what we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I always think gymnastics centers, that's like the first thing that comes to my mind. But yeah, that kind of commercial recreation.
Yeah. I mean, it seems like it's a common thing that a lot of cities do, and it doesn't, I don't, I don't know that it's hurting them. I feel like having the options out there, having more options for these places to make money and have thriving businesses and provide jobs in our community, I don't see how that's a negative and how we'd want to try to, you know, go away from that. Also with, you know, office space is a big topic of discussion these days in post-COVID and about how much office space we really need. So to me, on 3.1, I would tend towards the idea of, you know, open it up and allow more options, allow businesses, allow, if a business owner, if a entrepreneur wants to come in and say, I'm going to create the next amazing jump house center over, you know, near Ordinance? No, Vanguard. I always get those mixed up. Ordinance is gone. Over near Vanguard, then my kid can jump on a bouncy thing, and while mom watches, I'll go over next door and have a beer, I guess. But just having those options out there, I think, is healthy. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know how it's worked for other cities, I don't know if you have any insight on that.
I think the planning commission was not really concerned about this, but they did sort of wonder aloud, out loud, that is, if allowing those types of uses might sort of box out more traditional industrial users where there might be more jobs, higher-wage jobs, et cetera. So that was just, their wondering was kind of like, could it come back to bite us if commercial uses are boxing out more, you know, better or whatever employers? So that's kind of their thought.
What's your take on that?
I mean, yeah, full buildings are better than vacant ones, you know, so that's a consideration. I think diversity is important, you know, there's resilience in that, in having diversity. At the same time, I think the planning commission concern is something to keep in mind. You know, if you look at a Twist Bioscience, which is an anomaly, of course, it's an outlier, but there's a hundred million dollars' worth of taxable equipment in that building, you're not going to find that at a bouncy house. And since the city derives its general fund revenues from property tax, it's something to think about.
Perfect, next one.
Counselor Chevlin.
And that's my, I was just going to mention that, as far as 3.1, that we just don't want to lose larger industry at the expense of a bouncy house that may come and go rather quickly. So how long they would be able to stay, we certainly want someone, anyone that comes in to be successful. But I believe we just, if we can find a balance, at the very least, we would want to do that, but not bring in more of the smaller mom-and-pop businesses at the expense of a larger industrial complex.
I mean, for better or worse, the market will probably maintain a certain amount of balance anyway. And the reason why I say that is because of our I-5 location, you know, lease rates are not the lowest in the region here in Wilsonville, and so that's going to preclude a lot of businesses from occupying that space, you know. We'll take a business that generates significant revenue and profit in order to sustain a lease on a nice industrial space in the city.
So even though there was some concerns, it sounds like the marketplace may define what can actually operate there.
To a large extent, I think that's true.
Because it's going to be hard to predict. So we're here looking at the head, trying to make the best guess possible, and we won't know. AI was mentioned in the presentation. I don't think anybody in this room has answers to the AI future, I don't. So be interesting to see what would happen. But I appreciate everybody on council's input. Any other questions?
Council President Berry.
So back to the electrical power system, has staff looked at that? I think that's a really valid concern.
Has staff looked at that? I mean, we can, I can tell you, from a broader perspective, this is a statewide, it's a much broader issue. I mean, it's coming up, this is not just Wilsonville-specific, we talk about this everywhere. So I think a lot of your larger industrial users are coming up against this everywhere. As far as making Wilsonville more challenging, it sounds like you have recently had some updates to how you're dealing with transmission lines. I'm uncertain how that will play out, but I think relative to some other areas, Wilsonville's actually in a better position. We've done some work up in other parts, like north of the metro area, who are facing deficits right now. And, you know, when we spoke to PGE, it does sound like you can get some industrial users in Basalt Creek and Coffey Creek now, not if they're requiring massive amount, like, maybe not a huge data center, but maybe that's not what you want anyway. But, anyway, that's me, kind of, I don't know if you have any specifics you'd like to share.
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. I met with PGE Business Development staff just a couple of weeks ago, and the general message is, for the vast majority of users, they can serve their electrical needs. The question's not if, it's when. It's lead times. It's how long will it take to get them the power that they want? And that's where deals seem to be happening or not happening, as the case may be. If they can go to a different locale and they can get the power they need in six months instead of eighteen months, that's going to be the deal breaker. So there is capacity in the Wilsonville area, especially with the new substation that was constructed. There is even some resiliency benefits and power cleanliness benefits by having the battery facility on Day Road that was just constructed. So we do have some competitive advantages, but those lead times are really what makes the difference, and we don't have any influence over that. PGE cannot proactively build, overbuild, because those costs get passed to ratepayers, and that's illegal in Oregon. So they can only respond to power demand as it's requested.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Can I give Counselor Skoll leave? Thank you.
Counselor Skoll.
Just a couple of comments regarding the data centers. I was just reading a couple of weeks ago about, you know, data centers take up a large amount of space, they take up a large amount of power, but they employ a few people. I mean, a data center might have five or six employees, and that's it for, you know, covering fifty or sixty, maybe a hundred thousand square feet. So I'm not sure if that's something we'd be interested in chasing or whatever. And also regarding the power resources and everything, you know, if it's there, it works well for the tenant or the occupant. If it's not there, then I think, I would agree with you, you know, transformers and electrical equipment these days can be twelve to twenty-four months just to get the necessary equipment to upscale the power. So that can, you know, if you're not prepared for it going in from an infrastructure perspective, then you could be basically in trouble trying to get it in place in a short amount of time.
Thank you. Council President Berry, if you could be the last question or comment, because we're off by fifteen minutes right now, so.
So it's just a follow-up, because we had new power lines and transmission lines earlier this year, right? And so I'm just wondering if there's plans to add more new power lines and power poles in this area? Or, like, I think you just said that the existing lines and substations are adequate right now for the plan.
Well, I'll just jump in. I think we want to be careful about terminology. So distribution lines are the lines that go to a building that provide the power directly there. Transmission lines are the lines that run from source to substation to then be distributed. So my understanding is PGE has plans for additional transmission lines in the area. But as far as distribution lines, I think that's really what Matt is getting at about lead time. That's what they need, is the equipment to get the power to those specific buildings.
Right.
And that's the lead time that we're talking about, is for the distribution of the power, not necessarily the transmission lines. But I know PGE has active plans for additional transmission lines in the area.
So is the utility plans going to be incorporated into this report or not?
We have utility plans for everything but power, and that's simply because we're not the power provider. So it's a consideration, but it's not incorporated into our planning documents, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I mean, because that's part of infrastructure, roads and utilities and substations, so.
And so part of the reason why I meet with PGE Business Development is so that they know we're planning for this area, so that they can plan alongside us. So it's just a coordination thing.
And the city has a good working relationship with PG&E. I, as well, have had ongoing meetings, so they're part of that planning process as we look ahead. Folks, thank you so much. Have you gotten information that you need from us this evening?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is 2025 solid waste rate review and 2026 rate schedule.
We can get through this in ten minutes, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Save you guys some time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Amanda Gail Hinman, and the city attorney for Wilsonville, and I am the staff person who has stepped in to see this project through to the end. And with me, I have Chris Bell of Bell &amp; Associates, our consultant, and I am going to turn it over to him to run through the presentation tonight.
So when we met last, last time, I believe, it was in October, we got the direction from city council to come back with a rates fee schedule based on the cost of service for the different lines of business instead of the blanket 3.3%. And so the 2024 rate review, Republic Services reported 7.7%. The projected for the current year is 5.9%. Again, the 3.3% increase was not enough to increase the rates to necessary. So we did adjust those rates, and then also, we were instructed to look at that margin or that distance, not the margin, but the spread between a twenty and a thirty-two-gallon cart, to keep it reasonable or keep it at a lower rate. And so that's what we did. So the proposed increase for roll cart includes two components. It's a dollar thirty-eight for the collection cost, and that's everything but disposal. And then the disposal component that would be assessed for each cart size is based on the average volume and the average weight set out per cart. So combine those two, and that calculates the different rates that we are presenting or proposing to city council tonight. And the current spread for right now for the twenty-gallon cart is around eight dollars and twenty-five cents, and that's comprised of two things. There's the differences, the cost of service between the twenty and the thirty-two-gallon cart, which is approximately three dollars and fifty-six cents, and then there is a subsidization for that level of service that's paid for by the thirty-two, the sixty-five, and the ninety-six-gallon cart. And so that four dollars and sixty-nine cents is absorbed by the rest of the ratepayers to provide a lower rate for the twenty-gallon service. The proposed increase for 2026, it's still around a twenty-five percent rate spread. And so the question- still around a 25% rate spread. And so the question that we are bringing to council tonight is to maintain that 25%, or does the City Council want to set a 30%, a number on the spread? And so this right here is the cost of service increase proposed. And you can see the 23, the 31, and the 40 is the current rate. The disposal increase for the various sizes of the containers, the collection increase, the $1.38 across the board, and the combined of the $1.38 plus the disposal cost is the increased cost for the current levels of service. And so with the 30% there, we would fix that. So you would see a 1.4% increase in the 20 gallon rate. You'd see a 6.8% increase for the 35 gallon, 8% for 65. And 95 would be assessed a significant portion of an increase. And let me explain that there's not a lot of, there's no residential customers that have a 95 gallon cart. They're all commercial customers. So this would be passed back, this would be a burden that would be assessed to the ratepayer for commercial services. And again, the 20 gallon rate currently right now is subsidized by everybody else. And there is approximately 736 people or residents that have a 20 gallon cart. It's about 12% of your customer base. Commercial rates would remain the same, no change in that. The only difference in some of the ancillary fees would be increased by 3.3%. Those are the small fees, like an extra pickup or similar. And then the rate increase for Dropbox would be an increase for $16 per hall for a Dropbox, $24 for a compacted. And the reason it's a little bit more, because there's a return trip for that service. Hall rates are going to be increased to the nearest dollar. And box rental mileage and other rates associated with that would be increased by 3.3%. And with that, do we have any questions?
Any comments? Council President Barry.
It seems like in the report that there were two options. One was to increase different levels, and the other one was to have a flat rate increase across the board. But the recommendation was not to go with the flat rate. Is that right?
One was looking at the variance, the rate spread of the 70%, 100%, 130%. And the other is looking at cost of service as the increase. And the recommendation, both from our consultant and in consultation with Republic Services, is to go with the cost of service approach, which is the first increase that was shown.
Thank you.
For what's worth, I concur with that recommendation.
I will also just note in the staff report, one of the items that was discussed at the October 20th meeting was the level of subsidy that has occurred in the past for the 20 gallon. It has generally been subsidized for a very long time. We did put in the most two, the two most recent increases that were done. And you'll see that in the last increase, there was no increase for the 20 gallon, even though every other line was increased. And in the year prior, while the 20 gallon did see an increase, it saw a lower increase than every other line as well for residential.
Any other comments or concerns? Questions? Counselor Skoll.
2024 to 2025, are the rate increases and further back, are they pretty much consistent? Or is this a larger bump than normal?
This was a larger bump than normal, because last year, we had an CPI increase. And what we've seen in the past, over the last six, I believe, six years now, is we've seen increases specifically in disposal that far outpace the CPI. And that's the primary reason. If disposal, that, and again, that's regulated by Metro, if disposal was at a CPI, then we would probably be talking about a CPI. We probably wouldn't be sitting here tonight meeting about that. But that cost increase for disposal is a significant portion of the overall collection cost. And so that is impacting the overall rates. And that's why we're asking for something bigger than the CPI.
Yeah, because I missed, you know, I missed most of the initial meetings and all that. So I think you answered the question, is what was the, what are the, what's the breakdown of the cost increases? And so it sounds like the 80 of that is disposal.
Correct. It's a significant portion of it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, from what I remember from that last meeting, and to kind of, you know, speak to the public who may not have seen that meeting, you know, we have to make a good faith effort to meet this contract, to make sure that that margin is being met. And going with the 3.3% CPI increase would not be meeting that contract obligation that we have with Republic Services. And so to ensure that we are following through on our deals and our contract, that we have to look at this slightly increased situation. And so with that, I am good with these rates as they are.
Thank you. Any further comments?
So we will be bringing back the rate review for council consideration at your December 15th meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We got four minutes?
Thank you. Thank you for that. We made up some time for you all.
Next is Public Safety Project Update, updating Wilsonville Code Enforcement provisions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Amanda Gail Hinman, city attorney. And tonight, I'm here with Hannah Young from our legal department. And we are here tonight to discuss our public safety, our council goal around public safety update, and particularly our code enforcement update. So I'm going to turn it over to Hannah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're just going to be discussing our, Wilsonville's overarching code enforcement process. We'll get into an overview of how council goals relate to this, as well as a little bit of background and research that we conducted on the internal staff side. And then we'll get into the potential updates that we are proposing. And finally, we'll close it out with future next steps and considerations for the council. So the questions we're going to be asking you to consider tonight are whether or not you have any questions and feedback regarding the alternative analysis of the code provisions that staff performed. And then are, is the council going to be prepared to move forward reviewing draft code language for an updated code enforcement process? So a little bit of background on this project. We, as part of the 2025 to 27 council goals, they, the city council adopted the public safety and in order to streamline response to code enforcement challenges. And this strategy 2.2 calls for the city to update Chapter 1 code enforcement process and penalties, and to investigate the potential implementation of an administrative process. And by addressing this topic, we put together an internal review team of all of the different areas. Currently, Chapter 1 has two code provisions that refer to like code enforcement in general. And then we found all of the other processes that are included throughout Wilsonville Code. And then finally, in order to research processes and potential updates to the procedure, we did jurisdictional research in surrounding cities. Okay, so we'll provide an overview of Chapter 1 code enforcement and what Wilsonville's existing process is now. So the existing process, we have two sections within Chapter 1. Those are Wilsonville Code Section 1.011 and 012. This includes, 011 covers fines and prison terms for misdemeanor classification. I do think it's important to point out here that Wilsonville does not actually have a process for handling misdemeanors just within the city. So that's one area that we identified was a good place to change. And 012 just includes a, the fines for violations, usually with, in the first violation will be not exceeding $500. And then what you'll find is throughout the code that references Chapter 1, they'll also have a referral to 1.011 for any subsequent violations. And so some of the existing processes outside of Chapter 1, this is where we found that not only are there no references to Chapter 1 in order to enforce these sections of code, but they have specific separate processes themselves. So some of the main areas we found these in are Chapter 4, 6, 8, 9, and 10. It's important to note here that there are some processes that staff does not recommend changing at this time. Most notably is we have a industrial pretreatment water enforcement process that all has to be approved by DEQ. And so staff recognize that that's not necessarily a process that we want to overhaul right now. The overarching goal is to provide a consistent and streamlined process for city code violations in general, and then be able to have these specific processes still in place where they need to be. Some of the jurisdictions that we looked into were Beaverton, McMinnville, and Woodburn. I have these listed in particular. We, and within the council packet attachment, I do have several other jurisdictions listed that we looked into and noted. However, these three in particular have some of the proposed updates that we are interested in pursuing. Beaverton has a very well-laid-out voluntary compliance agreement process, along with timelines and everything, which we'll get into. McMinnville and Woodburn both have a graduated fine scale for infractions. And I think that when we discuss that further as well, we can talk about how that could work for Wilsonville. All right. And so now we're going to get into the proposed updates. And so, yeah, as mentioned, Beaverton has a grad, or sorry, McMinnville and Woodburn have a really nice graduated fine structure for their infractions. How Wilsonville can use this, it would be an opportunity to clarify the classification process, as opposed to having that one time not exceeding $500, and then an immediate subsequent violation turning to a misdemeanor classification, which, again, we don't process misdemeanors in Wilsonville. So this way, it will have a lot more flexibility and discretion. Something I mentioned in the staff report as well is, we don't really want to have the same fine for, you know, dumping in the river as we do walking your dog off leash. And so this is going to give an opportunity, as the internal team pointed out, about being able to apply fair and even code enforcement, depending on what the violation itself is and which number of violation it is. And then Beaverton has, as I mentioned, the VCA or the voluntary compliance agreement process. And this is something that Wilsonville already does basically in practice, we've learned. And so this would be an opportunity to officially codify that. It, something that we can definitely incorporate from Beaverton is the clear timeline for response. So once a citation is issued of this and voluntary compliance is kind of reached, they'll have 10 days to get the, whatever the violation is, in line. And then at that point, it is immediately graduated to the actual enforcement, and whether that be a fine or anything else. In addition, Beaverton also offers an appeal opportunity. And I think this is something that we can definitely incorporate, since we'll obviously still have our municipal court operating, and that will be subject to, again, the nature of the violation as well as the number. And then another thing that we noticed is a mesh of authority figures listed throughout our code for code enforcement. Our city attorney here is in charge of our trees and everything, which is awesome, but maybe not something that totally makes sense. And so meeting that overarching goal to have everything in line, clear, and easily streamlined, a clear chain of authority is something that we definitely can incorporate into any draft code language we offer. Currently, there is an internal staff document that is circulated, identifying various processes throughout the city and assigning responsibility. So what we can do is, on the internal side, we'll meet, again, we'll go over this document and incorporate the proper chain of authority for any of the Chapter 1 updates. All right. And so back to our questions. Are there any questions and feedback regarding the programs that I described? And are there any other alternatives that staff should explore at this point?
Counsel? Counselor Cunningham.
So to clarify, going forward with these changes, we still would not be able to do any criminal enforcement of misdemeanors, right?
That's correct. So any, if there, if for any reason there is a criminal component, it would be incumbent upon Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to submit that to the district attorney's office.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, City Attorney Lorax.
Counselor Shavelin.
Thank you. I said before, I think you've done your due diligence. You've done a lot of research on this. And I believe that what you're proposing, I fully support. I don't see any need for alternatives. I think you've done a deep dive and uncovered some things that can be improved, just in general processes. But I support it.
Council President Barry.
And I would just like to say I concur with Counselor Shavelin. Thank you for all the work, and I appreciate all that, and making everything a little more concise and crystal clear.
Counselor Skoll.
Is the intent there to have the enforcement process managed or packaged under one person or one group? Or would that be spread across departments?
In all likelihood, it is going to fall within different departments. And so what we're finding right now is, in certain code provisions, the people who are expressly identified don't necessarily make sense. I mean, I love trees. I'm not sure I should be the tree code enforcement person. But then internally, we have a pretty good layout of where all these different enforcement mechanisms should lie. And so really, what we're looking at is kind of marrying what the reality is with what our code should say. And to be frank, and we see this in code, this happens a lot in legislation, is that it gets outdated pretty easily. So what it may end up being, this recommendation may be that that enforcement is identified in code as to be adopted by resolution. And then the resolution will outline that. So that way, changes can be made more easily. So for example, if there's a title change in a position, you're not concerned about the fact that that's in code, that you have to go through an ordinance and a public hearing to update. You might just be able to do it by resolution. So we're looking at the mechanisms for how we get that done. But yes, I mean, to your, to answer your question specifically, there will be different people who handle enforcement. Our building official is going to handle building code violations. Our code compliance coordinator generally handles the general nuisance violations. Our, we, there's an individual in planning who handles land use violations. So there will be different people who handle it, but it's, we want to make sure that for everybody, community, staff, council, it's clear who has that authority.
Okay. Yeah, I was just with the operations department this afternoon, asking about who was in charge of trees, and now I knew who to call.
Great.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the responsibility roles will be made available to the public. So they will clearly know who's responsible for enforcement. Is that correct?
That's, that's what our intention is, yes.
And to complement what Counselor Cunningham said earlier, even though we do not have misdemeanor enforcement, we have, for example, a dog off the leash, which would be something the city might have jurisdiction on. But that dog, in the process of being off the leash, bites someone severely. Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, a deputy can have that discretion to cite them from some sort of misdemeanor crime based on that assault by the dog. some sort of misdemeanor crime based on that assault by the dog. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct.
So we're not foreclosing misdemeanors enforcement from Clackamas County. Is that a correct understanding?
That's exactly correct, yes.
Okay. I really appreciate all the work and effort you folks have done. Thank you for that and that clarification. Anything further? Okay.
I, I think, I think we have one more slide.
Oh, go ahead.
Hannah, do you want to give them a timeline for, for some updates?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we can expect to see is if council so chooses, if we want to review some draft code language, that'll be sometime in the early parts of 2026. And then at that point, we can convene again, discuss the draft code language and any other changes that might need to be made, and then discuss next steps for implementation, like Amanda referenced, like whether or not we go about it through a resolution or some other mechanism. We can discuss that once we have draft language for you all to review.
And just another note, I will say, as you saw, code enforcement is littered throughout our code, so there's going to be a lot of updates to various chapters, not just Chapter One that we'll be doing. And because Chapter Four is one of those chapters, that is something that we do have to run through Planning Commission per our city code and what the Planning Commission, where its authority is. So that's why we put 2026. For certain parts of this, it's going to take a little bit longer, and we want to make sure we can bring a full package to council for consideration at the end. But you'll be able to see some draft code language as we're going along.
Great, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
The work session is adjourned. The city council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, Section 192, 660, subsection two, paragraph F, exempt public records to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. And paragraph H, legal counsel slash litigation consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. We will be adjourned for five minutes, well, we'll resume at 6:20 PM.
A call to order, the meeting of the Wilson City Council for December 1st, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Chevlin?
Here.
Counsel President Berry?
Here.
Counselor Cunningham?
Here.
Counselor Skoll?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel President Berry, can I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero. Good evening. I hope each of you found a little rest and good company over Thanksgiving. Coming out of the holiday, I'm reminded how much the strength of this community comes from the people who show up for one another in big ways and in small ones. As Coretta Scott King reminded us, the greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members. As we move into the holiday season, it's worth keeping that spirit close, helping one another and looking out for our neighbors. Wilsonville's a place where everyone has a home here, no matter what their traditions or celebrations look like this time of year. In that same spirit, I want to speak to an issue that has created real fear and uncertainty for some of our neighbors for the past couple of months and calls to action by other neighbors. Since October, many of our neighbors have shared their fear and uncertainty following federal immigration enforcement actions in Wilsonville. I also hear the calls from residents asking us to do what other cities have done and adopt an emergency resolution. I understand why people want their city to stand visibly with them. As your mayor, I've tried to do that since being sworn in and will continue to do so. However, as mayor and as someone who has practiced law for thirty-four years, I naturally look at these questions through a legal lens. I'm not the city's attorney, but my background requires me to understand not only what an emergency resolution says, but what it actually does. I also have to consider whether the circumstances cited by other jurisdictions truly apply to Wilsonville, which has its own structure, resources, and community support systems. And as mayor, I hold just one vote on the city council. If the council chooses to consider action on this issue, I will support whatever final decision it reaches together. However, after reviewing the measures adopted elsewhere, such as Woodburn and Hillsborough, and speaking at length with our city attorney, several differences stand out. Many of the resolutions passed in other cities, including Hillsborough's, do not create enforceable actions. They largely encourage other entities to take steps, but do not restrict federal authority, do not create new rights, and do not change the legal duties of cities. Some jurisdictions also cited specific circumstances, such as interactions between their municipal police departments and immigration enforcement. Those are not present in Wilsonville. We do not have municipal police force. Our public safety services are provided through our contract with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and they do a very effective job. I also spoke this morning with Lee Crosby, the executive director of Wilson Community Sharing. Based on their work with families, they have not seen significant new needs tied directly to ICE activity here, only one indirect situation. And their financial resources have not been strained in the way reported by nonprofits in some other jurisdictions. Keep in mind, they need all the help we can give them, but it's not unique specifically to the issues with ICE. Given all this, declaring an emergency here and now would not create new tools or protections. Instead, it risks suggesting we have powers we simply do not have. And adopting an emergency measure without a clear legal or operational basis could unintentionally mislead the very people we're trying to support. Our immigrant and refugee neighbors deserve honesty and meaningful action, not gestures that sound powerful but do not change their situation. They should seek qualified counseling and legal representation if they need it. Two reliable resources include Immigration Counseling Services, also known as ICS. Their phone number is (503) 221-1689. Also Portland Immigrant Rights Coalition, also known as PIRC. Their phone number is (1888) 622-1510. Wilsonville will continue to stand with our immigrant neighbors by providing accurate information, strengthening community partnerships, and creating spaces where people can learn, connect, and support one another. As mayor, I will continue to monitor conditions closely and reevaluate if circumstances change, as well as any members of council may do. In that spirit, I want to share information about a regional community training taking place next week. On Tuesday, December 9th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, cities across the region are partnering with Central Cultural, PIRC, and ACLU to provide practical tools for community members who want to support neighbors affected by ICE detentions and immigration activities. This training is for allies only, is not intended for immigrants or families who may be at risk, and they should not register or attend. This is to ensure their privacy and safety. Registration is required, and participants will receive the Wilsonville viewing site location directly from the organizers. The training is free, with optional donation opportunities to support families impacted by detention. To register, visit the city's online calendar at wilsonvilleorgan.gov/calender and click "An Evening of Impact," which is on December 9th, to access the registration link. Again, please register only if you are not part of groups that may be at risk due to ICE activity. I remain committed to ensuring Wilsonville is a place where every neighbor feels seen, supported, and safe, and I will continue working with our partners, schools, and community organizations to meet that commitment with real action, not symbolic steps that do not change the reality on the ground. Now, turning to upcoming events. Tomorrow, I want to make sure the community is aware. There have been mailers. There are two public open houses being held tomorrow, December 2nd, on the city's sewer and stormwater utility rates. These sessions are identical and offered twice to give people options to attend. The first is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and the second from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Both will take place in the Willamette River Conference Room on the second floor of City Hall. Each session will include a presentation from city staff on the results of the recent sewer and stormwater rate review. That review recommends adjustments to the fee structure for residents, businesses, and developers to help fund roughly $240 million in capital projects over the next 20 years. Community members will be able to ask questions after the presentation. These fees haven't been updated in some time. Sewer rates were last adjusted in 2014 and stormwater fees in 2021, even as cost and infrastructure needs have continued to rise. The proposed schedule would phase in increases from 2026 through 2029 to address those gaps, and then establish a regular inflationary adjustment moving forward. The proposal has been discussed in council work sessions on April 21st and November 3rd. City council will hold a public hearing and consider an adoption on December 15th. On Thursday, December 4th, at 5:00 PM, please join me and council members in the Wilsonville Parks and Recreation Department for the annual tree lighting ceremony in Town Center Park, bundle up, and join the free, family-friendly festivities with choral performances, hot cocoa, pictures with Santa, letters to Winter Wonderland Station, and more. Thank you to Nichols Family Agency for their generous sponsorship. On December 3rd, the city invites community stakeholders to share their thoughts and learn what's next for Brown Road Improvement, the Brown Road Improvements Project, at an open house this Wednesday, December 3rd, at Inza R. Wood Middle School. Drop in anytime between 5:30 and 7:30 PM to talk to the project team and share your ideas for consideration. The Brown Road Project will upgrade Brown Road between Southwest Wilsonville Road and Southwest Evergreen Drive to more closely meet current city standards. Plan improvements include adding a shared use path and making access to adjacent neighborhoods safer. And with that, the balance my report, which consists of the various events and meetings I've attended, are in my writ materials. Also, we have lots of events in December, so I encourage you to go to the city's calendar on their website at www.wilsonvilleorgan.gov/calender. Our next city council meeting will be on Monday, December 15th, starting at 7:30 PM. With that, turning now to communications. We have a police department update. So first today is an update from Wilsonville Police Chief Rob Werps. He is joined by Sheriff Angela Brandonberg and Captain Jed Wilson of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Please come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had a plan, and then it was foiled by the sheriff showing up, which is a pleasant surprise. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Sheriff. So, everything is temporary, including my tenure here. So for those who don't know, as most people do, I'm going to retire at the end of the year. And I just wanted to say a few things. Thank you for the opportunity. The last eight years have been an honor, and I've learned so much. We've been able to tackle so many problems together and build so many relationships across the departments. This truly is a wonderful city with wonderful people that work here, and it's been a blessed opportunity for me, so thank you.
Okay, hold on, Matt. I'm still angry that you're leaving, but... You're a wonderful person, but before we go to the sheriff, sorry, Sheriff. Folks, please join me in a standing ovation for our deep gratitude for Chief Werps' service and professionalism to Wilsonville over these past eight years. With that, I'll turn it over to the sheriff.
Thank you. It's truly an honor to be sitting next to Chief Werps, who has done a fantastic job here in the city in developing our partnerships and ensuring that the citizens here in Wilsonville are safe. And I'm emotional for you. He's been, I just want to talk a little bit about his career, just a few words. So he, 26 years of law enforcement career. He came to us in 1999, and you were at Albany Police Department?
No, I came to you fresh off the streets.
Oh, that's right. I'm getting up, yeah, so fresh off the street, so fresh. So, a little bit behind me, not too far behind me. So, fresh. And he rose to the ranks, sergeant to lieutenant to captain. And it's been here for eight years. He has served here in the city and done a fantastic and amazing job. He's done a lot of things in his 26-year career. Just a few things he's done, I'll just name a few. Dive rescue team, he was a field training officer for new deputies, part of the Marine Unit, search and rescue team, transit police program manager, first aid CPR instructor, became an EMT, public information officer, and of course, Wilsonville Police Chief. So he's had, this is just a few things. There's other things, short comments. And some of his awards and recognitions, diving unit commendation in 2003. He received the Sheriff's Office Department Commendation in both 2007 and 2008. And in 2010, he received a life-saving award, which is no surprise to anybody that knows you and how a competent professional that you are. But, Rob, I wrote some things here because I knew it was going to be a little emotional for me. I'm thankful for your leadership, your professionalism, and your service to the Wilsonville community for the last eight years, and to the entire county for the past 26 years. Over these years, you have mentored many deputies who have had the pleasure to work with you, developing them into the next generation of leaders. And that is a true legacy. As you head off to much deserved retirement, know that you're leaving the Sheriff's Office and the Wilsonville Police Department in a better place because of not only who you are as an excellent law enforcement leader, but as a wonderful human with a servant heart and a compassion for those who you serve. So thank you for your 26 years of service to the people of Clackamas County. It has been an absolute honor to work with you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I know he doesn't like the applause, so the more we can torture him, the better, so...
All right, so bring on the torture. There's more to this. I'm Gina Troha. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I have had the pleasure to work with Chief Werps for the eight years that he's been here. I cannot say enough good things about him. When I was thinking about tonight, one of the words I wrote down was just what the sheriff had mentioned, was compassion. That's how he leads his team. That's how he leads this community. Building relationships for him is what it's all about, and getting to know people on a deeper level. So with that, what you can see above you is some lovely pictures that I had some help with from the sheriff's office, as well as some pictures from our own files. So you can see a lot of what the sheriff had mentioned in terms of all the work that he's done in Marine Patrol. Block Party, that's from 2018. That's former Counselor Ockerville and her little daughter at the time. And this is National Night Out, and I'm going to take a moment. Let me just scroll through these. There you go. Thank you for your years. But I'm going to take a moment and introduce one of our community members, who I think has built such a strong relationship with Rob over these years. And so, Emron Hader, the floor is yours.
All right. I wish I had prepared something. Michael Jordan once said, I'm serious, I'm going to quote Michael Jordan. He's the greatest player of all time. We can all agree. So what he says matters. But he said, earn your leadership every day. And I grew up not understanding law enforcement very well. My parents told me to, you know, follow what they say, and that's what I did. But I think the reason why I use that quote is because Chief Werps really does personify that. Like, every day, I feel like he's making an effort to learn. And the first thing that, the way that we met was, we were on a Zoom call, and, you know, I think I texted him or something off the call, and I said, I know what you're going through because when somebody who's brown, who has a, you know, from a different part of the world commits a crime, typically I get blamed for it. And that's not a joke. That's true. And that's not a joke, that's true. I went through during 9/11 and all kinds of things. And Chief Werps and I kind of connected because when law enforcement around the United States makes a mistake, there's hundreds of thousands of officers in our country who are awesome, and, but he feels magnified in those next days because somebody did something stupid and they shouldn't have done that. And so, I think both of us together decided that our mission was, how can we make the community a better place and bring people together? Because, you know, life's too short, we all have too busy of lives to be combative and try to figure out how we can divide each other. So we would get together for coffee like, once a month, and we would talk about life, you know? And I've never had conversations with somebody with such a high ranking just casually like that over coffee. So I was humbled every time we got together. And I just want to mention also that, being a great human being, it means a lot to me when I text him and I say, my parents are having people over, because that's what they do, because they're Pakistani, and they would love to include you, you know, to have some Pakistani food. And he showed up, and it was super cool that he came to my parents' house and got to me and my family and hang out with some of my parents' friends and eat some food with my parents. And that's just a different level of commitment that's not just for show. And so I, I'm a college professor, so I joke, like, what are you doing to prepare when no one else is watching? And he does the extra credit. When, when nobody else is watching, he, he takes time and effort and steps to connect with community members, and I text him or call him to go to an event in Tigard because it's an event with all these law enforcement people from around Oregon, and he shows up. I did want, I would be, it would be an error for me not to mention that, I've done an ordinate amount of research about how Wilsonville is an outstanding community, and under Chief Werps, in 2023, for example, we had more outgoing proactive calls than response calls. So I just want everybody to just kind of soak that in right now. Like, that's not normal, to be able to respond less than you're proactively going to check on our community members. And I also did some more research, and Wilsonville is continually ranked one of the safest, if not the safest, city per capita in Oregon, and we rank with some of the lowest crime rates in Oregon, and that is also a testament to somebody's great leadership. So, I have a bunch of other stats here, but I think we get the point. I am very relationship-oriented, and this person is at the top of relationship, people first. Great leader, clocks in for his job, does a great job second, but the person part is what's most important. So, I'm going to make a reference to an East Coast sports team, Jed. Tom Brady retired, the Patriots sucked. They did. But they're good this year, because they found someone and they created a system that worked, and I think you're going to be that quarterback. So, I'm excited for your future, because you're taking over a franchise that's really, really good. All right, I'm done.
Rob, I know you hate this, but you deserve the accolades. You've been outstanding. To have you for eight years has been remarkable for the community. Before you got here, there were quite a few chiefs that, some lasted for a couple of years, and some lasted for a year because they got promoted, and I think I remember asking you to please stick around for as long as you can, and you honored that, so. I just want to talk about the fact that I still think you're a dead ringer for Pedro But, all jokes aside, what you've done to build the department over here, you've brought in people that embrace community policing, that will go drive through neighborhoods and look for, look for open garage doors. Your coffee with the cop, National Night Out, Bike Patrol stuff, I mean, there's a very long list of all the things that you've really done to be present in the community. No Call Too Small, I've sent you emails and phone calls from citizens that are complaining about nuisances or speeding concerns. You've, you've been there, your officers have been there. You've built one hell of a team here in Wilsonville, and I know I have great confidence, having only met you a couple of times, that you will continue that legacy, so. But you are a remarkable human being, Rob, and I've had a great pleasure of serving with you for your last eight years, so thank you for everything.
Thanks. There's lots to take in. Appreciate it, thank you.
Hey, Rob, one thoughts, some thoughts for me. During the last 18 years, our families lived in this community, and I would say that the eight years you've served as chief has been a knockout, fantastic job in comparison to the, any other years that, before that. I think you have introduced trust to our community and to my family personally. I think the comments about you going the extra mile, I've had conversations with you when I need information, and you're, you would be out in the garage working on something, and you'll take the call, you've been very helpful. And that outreach, I hope and pray will continue, and I expect Captain Jed Wilson will honor that tradition, but you're going to be missed. So, if you ever get bored out of retirement, and if Captain Wilson needs, you know, someone to cover your vacation, his vacations, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing you back on the streets, so, just saying, but thank you.
Very kind, thank you. Did you want to introduce Jed?
All right. Yeah, I was going to say, let's welcome Captain Jed Wilson to the Wilsonville Police Department Community, with all the pressure that we just gave him. Jed, would you like to say a few words?
That's very hard to follow all that, so I'll be very quick. Yep, so Jed Wilson, I'm excited to step in to fill Rob's shoes, there are big shoes to fill, but he is, he's been trying to unload his many, many years of knowledge onto me, and I'm doing the best I can to absorb that. I started in law enforcement 21 years ago this month. I started with the City of Albany and then came to, it was the city, I was the City of Albany. Came to the Sheriff's Office in 2014 and spent my first two and a half or so years with the Sheriff's Office as a deputy here in Wilsonville. So I had that experience. I've done quite a few things in my law enforcement career, I was an SRO, I was on SWAT, I was a negotiator, I was on Marine Patrol, and I spent the last several years in our investigations unit. So I've touched quite a few things in law enforcement, and I have a pretty good understanding of what Wilsonville, I think, needs and wants, and looking forward to fulfilling that the best we can.
Well, thank you. I'm sure you'll do a great job. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the Community Enhancement Project update from the heart of the city has been rescheduled once again, I just want to let you know. And we're now turning to the Town Center Urban Renewal Communication Council Goal Update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to welcome up Gary Conklin and Paige Strickler with CFM Advocates, and also John Horvick with DHM Research. I think, I believe John is going to go first and present the results from the focus groups. We had three focus groups on Town Center Urban Renewal. He'll present his findings first, and I believe Gary's going to do most of the speaking for CFM Advocates, because Paige is a little under the weather, but she may say a few words if she feels compelled, so. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Horvick.
Thank you so, thank you so much, City Manager, and thank you, Mayor and City Council and the community of Wilsonville. I am John Horvick, I'm the Senior Vice President at DHM Research. We're a nonpartisan public opinion and policy firm. Another way to say it is we're pollsters. I like to say that our job is to ask people what sort of communities they want to live in, and we are fortunate to work with communities all across Pacific Northwest, particularly in Oregon. And we do research of different types, we do a lot of survey research, so we are one of those firms that calls people up right around dinnertime, right around now, and asks them questions about things in their community. And I, surveys are good at asking people what they think, you know, support something or oppose it, like something, dislike it, they're pretty good at asking questions like that. They're not so good at asking questions about why people feel the way that they do, what are their values, what are their experiences and concerns that form their opinions about what? And so, another research approach that we'll often use is focus groups. Focus groups are an opportunity to recruit people from, in this case, the City of Wilsonville, and have in-depth conversations with them, and I'll talk a little bit about the methodology in a second. But we can ask them not only what they think about issues, but importantly, and I'd say more importantly, we could have conversations about why they feel the way that they do. And today, we'll be talking about some of the focus group findings, trying to give voice to the opinions and concerns and values that were shared with us across the groups that we did with the community. So I will walk through this, this reiterates a little bit of what I said. What is the purpose of qualitative research? Focus groups are qualitative research. We want to hear a range of opinions, you know, so the whole spectrum of different opinions maybe the community holds. And again, it's more to understand why people feel the way that they do than the what. So less about the percentages of, you know, X percent feel this, Y percent feel that, but more descriptive. And you'll see some of that explanation and quotes here in this. For this particular set of groups, we began, recruited participants from a list of registered voters in Wilsonville, so registered voter lists are matter of public record, we start there. We call people up, we ask them a number of questions, make sure that they're eligible for the project. We do set quotas to try to ensure that the people who we recruit are actually broadly representative of the community, so by age and gender and where they live in the community. When you, when you do focus groups, we talked about 34 people, you're never going to get a perfect, but we do try to account for the differences in the community to ensure that we are representing various voices that are out there. When we talk to people on the recruitment, we ask them some questions, not only about their background, but about some current issues. We asked about the Town Center. Now, it was not a rich description of the Town Center, but we asked about the Town Center, and whether or not they're generally supportive or opposed to the plan, and we also asked some other issues too, including the current things that were occurring when we were doing the recruitment. So, we asked about a federal policy dealing with Medicaid, excuse me, federal healthcare credits, and then also about the state gas tax. We wanted to decoy a little bit about the focus groups, so it wasn't quite so obvious what the plan was. We tried to not just recruit people who only want to talk about a particular issue, or have people choose not to participate because it might be about a certain issue. You'll see that most of the participants were familiar with the Town Center, but there were some steps we took to be able to do that. We did attempt to have the groups be generally a group of people who said that they were supportive of the Town Center, a group that was generally opposed to the Town Center, and then a group that was less sure, or didn't know about it. As a matter of fact, I think in the groups, that people generally don't hold a single opinion. And we did have some people in all the groups who were kind of, you know, in a group of supporters, we had some people who in fact, I think, were more, more opposed in our group of opponents, we had some groups that have more nuanced opinions as well. But I can say with confidence that all broad perspectives were heard and were captured in our conversations. So the purpose of this, we want to assess community support, concerns, and questions about the Wilsonville Town Center, explore people's perspectives by using urban renewal funding, urban renewal is a funding mechanism, so it's the plan itself and then the money, how we're going to pay for it. And then gauge reactions about information about the Town Center, so give people some different information and see what they thought about that. So three focus groups, 34 people altogether, they were conducted in late October, they were two-hour sessions, so people really committed a lot of time to this. And then our conversations with the participants include both how we, we talk as a group, and they also do writing. We always give people an opportunity to write their thoughts and feelings down about topics we discuss before they share their opinions with the group. So it comes to people's, their own minds before maybe they're influenced by others. Both are important, but we give people that opportunity. Here are the demographics of the participants, I'm not going to go through all this, but you can just sort of broadly see, you know, age and gender and race and ethnicity area, time in Wilsonville, to see that we hear it from a representative group of people. We did ask in groups, it's like, have you heard of the Wilsonville Town Center? Now, again, we asked them in the recruitment about it, but 26% or 26 of our 34 participants said that they indicated that they had some familiarity with the Town Center, eight did not. So, we're going to divide this by talking about some high-level things that we heard, and then some questions that people had. But first, what do they value about living in Wilsonville? What are the things that they really care about and want to maintain? And then, I think, how they think about the Town Center, this is quite a bit of the lens that they see through things. So, the key things that people said over and over again is that they value safety. I think that is really evident by the, by the conversation and the celebration we just had, that safety is really important to the folks in Wilsonville. The small-town feel came up over and over again, expressed in different ways, but very frequently, that phrase was used. Location, a lot of that had to do with proximity to Portland, Salem, Corvallis, you can get to various places pretty easily. And then the beauty of the area. That was expressed both about the city of Wilsonville itself, but again, that proximity to nature, farmlands, forestlands, coasts, mountains, these are all the things that people care about, value about Wilsonville, want to see maintained and enhanced. What are they concerned about? Well, the first things that come up about traffic. Traffic, we could have had whole conversations, a whole two hours easily about, about traffic. And then, there's ambivalence about growth. There are some folks who are excited about it, and other folks who aren't. There are, and even those, even within people, they maybe see the benefits and values of growth, but shares some concerns perhaps about affecting the small-town feel that they value, but they also want to have economic development. So, that is, was very present in our conversations as well. In terms of what they express that they would like to see more of or added or improved upon, local, small businesses, and I'd say particularly for dining and shopping, that's going to come through also, again, how they think about the Town Center, what they valued and prioritize about the Town Center, and having community gathering places for people to connect, seen as a deficit, but again, they want, they like that small-town feel, they love the ability to gather and connect, and they want to see that enhanced as well. The conversation then turned to the Town Center, and we presented people first with the opportunity to talk about the Town Center without giving them information, so whatever they brought to the focus groups with, informed or not, and then we provided people with information throughout the group in more detail. This tries to summarize the key things that we heard. And so, things that they, that the appeal about the Town Center is excited about more local businesses and places to gather in Wilsonville. Again, it's those restaurants, those small businesses, community gathering places could be public spaces, a park, for example, or a Wilsonville Civic Center of some sort, a public piece of infrastructure, but could also be, you know, a private enterprise, you know, a cool bar or restaurant that has a music venue. Those are both sort of captured in, sort of the idea of a community gathering place. You know, they want some of their own money here. There's a frustration among our participants that they're often traveling to other communities, Lake Oswego, Sherwood, et cetera, to shop and go out and dine, and they know that that money is going to some other community, and would love to keep that money here in Wilsonville. So, the attractiveness about a Town Center with these types of shopping and dining opportunities, so not only have to not travel to other places, but they can keep that money locally, was a real part of the appeal. I'd say particularly, we showed people some images about the potential future development of the Town Center, you know, got real attracted to the parks and open spaces. They'd like the ability, they like to imagine being able to get to the Town Center, walk around the Town Center, do some shopping, walk to a park, that walkability, that connection, those interactions that they'll have with their friends and neighbors that these, whether out and about in these open spaces and these businesses is something that they found appealing about the Town Center. Housing is, you know, where we had the most conflict and differences of opinions in the group, and strength of opinions, I'd say, as well. For those who saw appeal in housing at the Town Center, it was often framed around affordability and allowing young people to stay in Wilsonville. So having more housing, helping keep costs affordable in the community, we heard people talk about young people, worried about young people not being able to stay in Wilsonville, and they want to have that opportunity. to stay in Wilsonville, and they want to have that opportunity as well. And so, for those who talked about housing and attractiveness of housing at the town center, affordability, young families, keeping families here, were things that were attractive and appealing about them. We gave people a list of different things that could be in the town center, these are high-level things. Of course, there are other potential priorities that you could consider with the town center, but then we just asked them to rank them on a, from very high to very low. So, local businesses, parks and rec space, event space. We asked about two different types of housing, affordable housing and market rate housing and office spaces. And it's clear what shows up at the top, local businesses and park and rec spaces. So those, it has the longest green, and it's hard to see on the screen here, but the dark green bars are the very high priorities. So, of our thirty-four participants, twenty-four rated local businesses is a very high, very high priority, and the six that it was a high priority. Parks and rec space is twenty-one and eight. Lower down the list, this is that ambivalence, and one way it shows up is housing. You can see twelve said affordable housing should be a very high or high priority, twelve also for market rate housing. But also, about equal numbers said it should be a lower, very low priority, and a big chunk kind of in the middle. And then office space, they're at the lowest. We also presented people with some information about the town center, sort of statements that people might say or make in support of the town center plan. These are just shorthands. These are intended to capture the essence of the statement, they're not, they're not all inclusive. But the two that people told us were kind of the very good reasons, or good reasons to support the town center plan, were addition of local amenities, but again, particularly restaurants, particularly small businesses, and community gathering places. I'll talk about the others in a little bit here, but again, this is, this is, mirrors what they talked about is most valiant about Wilsonville before we even got into the town center plan. So, there's consistency about how they think about Wilsonville, what they value about Wilsonville, and how they responded to the town center plan. What are concerns? So, as I said, housing was probably, you know, people held the strongest opinions about. And we did hear several participants' voices dislike for the amount of housing that the town center plan allows. Particularly, they raised concerns about traffic. Again, that was, you know, a high concern that they had. And losing that small-town feel. Some participants believe that crime is greater in higher-density developments as well. So, that small-town feel, that more traffic, and some, not all, but some participants brought up crime as well. When we showed images of the town center, the critical feedback that we heard had to do with the height and design of buildings. Often, sort of words were talked about, too tall, too modern, felt too much like a big city. Again, these are not universal, but for those who express concerns, these are the type of concerns that were expressed. And I'd say that there's but an equal split about whether affordable housing should be a priority, and you saw that on the previous slide when we asked directly on that scale. For those who disliked it, their mix of concerns included that Wilsonville should prioritize single-family homes, sort of what it's more, they're more comfortable with. And that some concerned that lower-income residents wouldn't be able to support neighborhood businesses, local businesses. So, so making this sort of connection between the income of the residents and the dollars that they might be spend on the, on the local businesses there. So, again, this is sort of that list of statements that we gave people, again, these are just shorthand, and then just the ones that they were the least likely to say were good reasons to support the town center, if they had to do with transportation. This was about impansments and that, to transportation that the town center plan would allow and around housing. Importantly though, we really wanted to hear what questions that they have, what information that they like in order to be able to make informed decisions about the town center. One of the big ones was, they have very different perceptions, I'll show you some quotes here in a second, about how long the town center is going to take to develop. And it was really insightful when we asked them, because how they think about the future of the town center was often rooted in what their expectations were for the timeline. There is excitement to develop this property. You know, there's differences about how it might be developed, but they're not, I don't think anybody was happy with the status quo. But there are anxieties, particularly about traffic when it comes to development. And so, for those who thought that it was going to be a short timeline, it's sort of cut a couple ways. One, there was enthusiasm that action's going to happen. On the other hand, there was some worry that, oh goodness gracious, there's going to be so much construction going on that it's really going to disrupt our lives. On the other hand, for those who really thought that there was going to be a long timeline, there was sort of, for some, kind of deflation that, oh goodness gracious, we're not going to be able to move on this nearly as much, or as to this pace that I would like, it's going to take a long time. On the other hand, sort of a relaxation that maybe there would be less day-to-day disruption if it's going to be spaced over a period of time. But the important takeaway is that people are coming to these conversations with wildly different expectations, and it is informing how they think about it. Another question we got a lot was wondering why buildings have continued to remain vacant and that the cities struggle to redevelop the area. They just don't know. They're just unsure. And oftentimes, where people are unsure, they will fill in that information with their doubts or their concerns. But they're also just asking, if we're having these troubles today, can we realistically make improvements in the future? So, they want to know, why have we gotten to this place now so that I can understand what that means for our ability to move forward? Again, there's just uncertainty about that. They don't know. And then, there are, many are uncertain about the details of the plan, including the funding sources, we'll talk about that in a second, and what it's going to cost residents, if anything. Again, these are just, these are the things that people said over and over again that they'd like to get a better handle on in order to be able to make an informed decision. So, here are just some quotes from, about the timeline, kind of bucketed here from those who thought it was going to be kind of immediate, more five to twelve years and then twenty to thirty years. But then the immediate, in a way, I would love it to get this thing up and running as soon as possible. When you think about it in a pragmatic way, there's a little bit of comfort in me thinking it's gradual. So, this person wants to get it going, but you know, that pragmatism does, you know, maybe gradual might be better. Again, can we, in the meantime, do something with the space in our city? I feel that the city is slowly dying in the meantime while we're making plans for the future. And I'd like to see it in five years or less. Another person just said, they guess it's going to be five to ten years. To me, it's probably ten to twelve years, that's what I would think, and that seems slow to this person. And then some who thought it was going to be twenty to thirty years, with the vision, probably thirty, but I'm talking the basic skeleton ten years. So, like, the whole thing thirty years, but maybe some of the basics ten. And the last, another person said, I think they're projecting twenty to thirty-year build-out. A lot of debts come in the first five to ten years. There's going to be a lot of disarray for us in the next decade while they create the future that they want. Again, these are just various perspectives, and those various perspectives informed how they thought about the plan. And getting into urban renewal, we started our conversation with urban renewal, but just before we gave any descriptions or had any conversation, just having them write down what comes to their mind when they hear urban renewal. And these are just bucketed, these are just, we read all their comments and just kind of bucketed into some categories, but fourteen of them, remember, we had thirty-four participants, had something about just development and improvement. And then the rest, you know, higher taxes, construction and noise, subsidies and debt, gentrification, traffic, were the types of things. About urban renewal, I can report to you that folks are largely uninformed about urban renewal and tax increment financing. Doesn't mean that they want to be. They came in the conversation really hungry to learn more, but they didn't come to, for the most part, I mean, some people obviously had expertise to some extent or no more, but largely, this was an unknown to folks. And related to that, there's a prevailing belief, we heard it over and over again among our participants, that urban renewal increases property values and therefore property taxes for all residents inside and outside the urban renewal area. We heard over and over again, in various ways, that this is going to increase my taxes, and you ask them where they live, they don't live in the urban renewal area. But there was a presumption expressed over and over again that this is going to occur. Typically, the way it was expressed was, if this is successful, it will raise property values. When property values go up, my property taxes go up. Now, that also, comments like that also express confusion about Oregon's division between assessed value for property taxes and real market value, but it is a persistent thing that we heard. And by the way, I mean, just that confusion about assessed value and real market value is, we hear this all the time in all communities across Oregon. Our property tax system is confusing, urban renewal, tax increment financing is confusing too. And, and we heard, we heard these sorts of things in our groups. And then many participants are uncomfortable with the city incurring debt because they don't know how much it is, how it's going to be paid back or over what timeline frame. What questions do they have? So, again, to feel informed about an urban renewal, a vote on urban renewal, our participants wanted reassurance on the plan's details. What are you going to do? The timeframe, how long is it going to take? The cost impact, how much is it going to cost? Who's going to pay? Potential trade-offs? If we're choosing to do this, are we, is, are we sacrificing something else? And can the city deliver? And again, that, some of that sense of can the city deliver is based upon their opinions about or questions about the current site. So, just yet to reiterate, they want to better understand the current conditions and the reasons for business closures and what, and how they might influence the city's ability to deliver on a town center plan. So, just to quote, "We haven't been successful to date, so why will we be successful in the future?" You know, this isn't saying that, when we heard these things, they're not saying, don't do it, you can't do it, but they do want to know if we've, how do we get from here to there, given where we are today. So, again, these are just kind of quotes directly from our participants, these are the things that they want to know in order to be able to make an informed choice. What is the increased cost to taxpayers? How much more is it going to cost me? What is it going to cost me over ten, fifteen, twenty years? How much will this increase my taxes? How will it be funded? Having the fund and being transparent would be something that's really important. Who's taking part? Private investors? Why are things the way they are now? What is being sacrificed? And then timelines, how long is this going to take? It comes back to having clearer timelines or milestones. That would help everybody feel a little bit more at ease with the timeframe, even it's going to take longer. If we knew, okay, the first five years, this is what's going to happen, this is the best projection for five to ten years, et cetera. These are the things that people want to know to be able to make an informed choice. I think this is my last slide, yeah. The values, that small-town feel, safety, concerns around traffic, really valuing the opportunity to be able to shop locally, particularly small local businesses and restaurants. And then there's division around housing. And I think, I'm going to pass it off to Gary and Paige. I think that the results that they'll show from the survey will mirror much of what we heard in the focus groups.
So, the, first off, good to see you again, Mr. Mayor and council members as well. Paige and I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the survey, which we developed, as John just indicated, more or less in parallel with the focus groups so that we would have a wider set of perceptions from the community about many of the same subject matters. Obviously, an outreach vehicle is, is a different animal, but keep in mind, this is still qualitative research. Was it statistical group of people? It was anybody that could find it online and filled it out, that's who did it. And there were five hundred and fifty-five people who did do it, which is very impressive. And if you want to read the entire group, make sure that you have a lot of coffee because there are about nine hundred pages worth of answers. And you ought-
Hold the mic full a little bit.
They're probably better off without me too loud. But it's, it shows your community is interested. You might have wished all twelve thousand or so people would have done it, but really, for that representative group, it's, it's pretty useful. So, twelve questions. They were a mix of open-ended and questions that gave people a choice. I mentioned there were five hundred and fifty-five people. Again, the percentages are not statistically valid, so there are a few percentages in here. They're useful for information, but don't take them up to the betting line. So, first question, and by the way, if you want to follow along, on the very top bar is the question and what, what people's options were. So, on this question, which was, what do you value most about Wilsonville, we asked people to give their top two reasons why they would, why they like Wilsonville, what they value about Wilsonville. And as you can see, similar to the focus groups, people talked about community, small-town, neighbors looking out for each other, community is how I might broadly just describe that. Right next to it is safety and low-crime environments. Next is parks, trails, natural setting. So, you can see the list here and I won't belabor it, but it's, it's a good list and again, similar to what we saw from the focus groups. The second question was most pressing issues facing Wilsonville. Again, we asked people to give their top two reasons. The leader of the pack with the most mentions, and again, these are volunteered mentions, was economic vitality, vacant storefronts, perceived decline of local businesses, and lack of retail and restaurants. And you can follow the rest of them there along the line. Again, parallel to what the focus group participants said. Here we go. We asked people about their familiarity with the town center plan, and you can see, more than half, almost sixty percent, had what they expressed as somewhat familiar. Very familiar, around thirty percent. Relatively low amount of people that were not familiar or just chose not to answer. That suggests, by the way, that the people that have an interest in the town center took the opportunity to fill out the questionnaire, which is a good thing. So, you, you found fairly rich responses from people who have an interest in it and know something about it. The importance of a vibrant town center, again, this is a question that parallels the focus groups. The majority of people, again, more than fifty percent, said it's a very, very important. Somewhat important, another twenty, twenty-one percent, so when you think about that, that's seven out of ten people who responded think that it's important and they would, they would like to see it. The desired features of a town center, again, this is a question that, again, parallels what we ask in the focus groups. The most overwhelming response, as you can see, is people want to eat out in Wilsonville. Just as simple as that. And they'd like to shop here, too, but mostly, they want to eat here. And they hope that the town center provides them opportunities. From the flavor that we picked up from the focus groups, I think they're interested in locally-owned restaurants that are unique, the ones that they might now go to another city for. They would like to be able to not drive as far or even be able to walk to a restaurant in the town center. And you can see, again, the choices here. It's probably worth noting to follow up on John's point, that a variety of housing choices didn't rank very high. Housing that's affordable was a little higher, and the parks, street improvements are kind of in the middle. So, anyway, did I say that people want to eat here? We asked a question, as was asked in the focus group, of if they had to point someplace else besides Wilsonville where they have a town center that they like and, and visit, where would it be? Not probably too surprising, given that you're fellow Clackamas County residents here. Lake Oswego- Lake Usuigal and Wes Lynn got the highest mentions. I thought it was interesting that Sherwood was in the list as well. And you can see all the way down, people had a number of mentions, including people that mentioned Wilsonville itself as a model. Sources of trusted information, this was an open ended question. We gave people three choices. The city website, social media, and the local newspaper are probably the premier places. But really, there is not a huge split here. So almost all of these modes have some benefit in trying to reach your constituency. Question eight, what features do they like? Again, not too surprising, retail, local businesses, shopping, boutiques. Walkability is a key feature that they would see, restaurants, dining, parks, and food pods, food carts. John didn't mention this, but food carts, food pods were mentioned over and over again in the.
In every group.
Yeah. Didn't matter whether they knew something about this or that. People like food pods. And it's hard for me to understand because I don't go to them. Apologies for admitting that, but people like them. And they see them as a relatively easy thing to provide. I don't know if that's true or not, but they do. What changes would they like? These are, and we gave people two choices, the top of what would they would like to see. Parking supply and management were among the top. Housing amount and density mix, these are the changes now. Retail, restaurant mix, traffic circulation, and financing. In terms of support for urban renewal, again, in connection with the town center, we gave people a single choice. These were the four choices that they had. Forty-three, almost 44% said yes. 167% or 30, 167 respondents or 30% said no. The maybes, 25% and the people that weren't sure didn't answer, were just around 1%. So, you know, that's not bad for a split. Reasons for urban renewal support or opposition or indecision. The people that were supporters viewed it as a pragmatic tool. They liked the idea of coordinated build out, incremental development. The opponents characterized urban renewal as corporate welfare, concerns about long term debt, tax policy, and they expressed skepticism about city fiscal transparency. The undecided respondents said they really wanted clear information on the mechanics of urban renewal, individual tax impacts, and specific project lists and sequencing. Again, that's pretty similar to what we heard in the focus groups. I ask this question because when Paige and I interviewed the mayor, one of the first things he said was about the Wilsonville way. And it seemed like a really interesting question to ask what people in Wilsonville regard as the Wilsonville, Wilsonville way. And this is what came out of it. The top one are the people that saw it as a positive framing, and these are the reasons. Small town, safe, family oriented ethos, neighbors who help each other, respectful civil discourse, collaborative problem solving, high service levels for Wilsonville size. Yeah, those are pretty thumbs up kind of views about how they regard Wilsonville. People that were neutral or unfamiliar, and there were people that said they hadn't heard the phrase, they didn't know what it meant exactly. So they just didn't attach any specific meaning to it. There were a few, not many, that attached a negative connotation to it. They, you can see by the reference, they described perceived shortcomings in local politics, concerns about growth, development, or loss of historic character. So it's not a, it's not a, everybody likes the phrase, but those who seem to know it attach a lot of positive virtues to it. And those are your 12 questions.
With that, any council questions or comments? Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you for, thanks. Thank you for bringing that to, to council and to a council meeting. That was important to a lot of people in our community to be able to also experience that presentation like all the council members did. And I don't, you know, I'm hoping that, hoping that it, it gives some perspective for people on the opposition side, the support side, somewhere in the middle. And I'm sure that all the social medias will be abuzz with this. What I will add to this is that, you know, in that, with that idea, I will invite our community to be thoughtful about how they go about discussing this, remembering that we all have a different, you know, view on this and a different perspective and to disagree respectfully. You could see on there that the vast majority of people want to see something done with town center. That's, that's not even a question. Like, we know that. There's, no one's going to argue that. How we get there, that's, that's the question. Which car we drive to get there, that's it. So I invite the public, I invite our citizens, engage respectfully online about this, you know? And, and, and just remember that at the end of the day, we're, we're going to figure something out. We're going to get something done. Let's not, let's not make enemies out of each other while we get there.
Counselor Shavelin.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work that has been done. And thank you to our community, to everyone who responded or has yet to respond, because I'm sure, I hope we hear from you one way or another. There is obviously a, a lack of understanding about some of the, the plan and what urban renewal means. How are we going to begin to answer those questions? What's next?
So the real work begins now. Now that we have information, so the next steps will be primarily with CFM, and it will be designing a communications and public outreach strategy to get you all comfortable with a particular direction. So what that looks like is we're going to take all this information and we're going to bring back some recommendations to you on what that looks like. And then you will have a, a chance to say yay, nay, tweak, add, delete. And then, once we get that in place, we'll start working.
So a follow up question to that. So the, we don't know what that work will be yet, though. Will there be community gatherings for people to learn more? Or is that yet to be developed?
Yet to be developed. And it will be a discussion amongst staff and CFM, and we will bring back recommendations for you to consider. And if we bring stuff back that you feel like we missed the mark on, or if you feel like we missed something, then you will tell us that. And then we will add that. If there's something in there that you don't agree with, we will take that away. So really, it's your process at this point. Ultimately, you represent the community, and the five of you, or three of you, or four of you will tell us what that end result will look like. So stand by.
Counselor Schol. You just answered my question, but thank you for the question. It was a good report. Thank you for the information. The discussions we have are great. And, you know, for the public, I think that the, I have to agree with, you know, Counselor Cunningham, the information there turned out better than I expected. It was well, well illustrated. And we really need, you know, this is a plan that will help the city in the long run. This is a generational plan, and it's a plan. And we need to work together as a community to just kind of work through the, the, the smaller issues to get to the greater reward of the town center. And, you know, that'll take some time. And I've spent the last couple of weeks kind of reviewing and going back through the plan. And in my mind, when I look at a plan, I need to visualize it. It's just how I operate, and I need to see it. And I can see it in the plan. I can see how it works. I can essentially correlate the financial side of it to the plan side of it. It's a, it'll be a slow moving plan. It'll be market driven. The market's going to change. It's changing now. It'll change tomorrow. And it's all according to, you know, basically consumer behavior and how all that's going to work. And we will need to blend all that in to see how this is, how, how this is going to look. But I can see the end product, what this will look like in 20 years, what it'll look like in 30 years. And I think it's a very good plan. We just need to work through the transportation issues. We need to work through the traffic issues, the part, there's, you know, some parking stuff that needs to work, to be worked out. And then how the retail versus the restaurants and so forth, how that's going to sort out and how that'll look in terms of design of, of the, of the town center. And again, that's going to be an iterative process, and it's going to take years to work out. And, and I look forward to working on it. So thank you very much.
Council President Berry.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody there for your reports. I think that, and also thank you to all the participants. To me, it was really informative to hear that the results were really similar from both methods. I think that tells a lot. And what I'm hearing is that, you know, a lot of people are concerned that there's vacant lands and properties in the town center and that we want, everybody wants to see the city thrive. And for me, I see this as an opportunity. And I'm, I'm really excited to be able to move forward and to move forward as a community on this project. Thank you.
I want to also thank you for your presentation. I asked a number of questions with you folks when I met directly. I won't reiterate those tonight. I'll just say that I think communication still was warranted from my one person. I think a task force still is something I'd like to see. I like an opportunity where people also can come and meet and schedule town halls in some way. Or as we have one wise member of the community said, well, why not do a Zoom town hall? You know, to be more, have more accessible input. But that's just my view. So I'd be interested to explore if that's a possibility. If not, why? Because that's something I feel that is warranted, not just some of the stuff here. But I appreciate all the input you've provided. It's helpful for me. But that communication outreach is something that the community has called for. We all had that hearing from everybody, and I just don't want to shortcut that communication and allowing them to provide input. So, but thank you. Anything further from everybody? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now move to community input and announcements portion of the city council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. Is also the time to address items on the agenda. Is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please, when conveying your remarks, whatever they may be, please speak to the council as a whole and not directly to any one member of council during your comments. Also, please note, you can use the podium or sit at the tables in front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's website, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You are welcome to submit information in writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other counselors
My name is Doris Whaler, and my address is on file, but I live in Frog Pond West. In the 60 years that I have lived here, that was the best survey and presentation that I've heard of anything the council ever asked for. What, everything I heard tonight from those people presenting was exactly what I hear from my neighbors and my friends and a lot of people that I know in this city. So congratulations on doing that very well. My second item is, I think it's on the back page of the messenger. Does anyone have one with them? Is there a list of events put out by the DEI committee on that page? Christmas is not listed. There are a lot of Christians in this town. Instead of the DEI committee just focusing on tribes or minorities or whatever it is they focus on, maybe they could focus on 80% of this community that are probably Christians. The third thing is, I want to congratulate you on all the beautiful decorations you have up. I love the snowflakes and the tree in the circle and all the wonderful decorations at Town Center Park. And I want to compliment our crew that do all that work for us every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Randy Wortman. My address and contact information are on file. And first, I want to second all of Doris's comments. I think they're very pertinent and should be given due consideration by the council. Three and a half years ago, in July of 2022, I submitted a citizen's concern to the city council requesting the assistance of city staff in replying to three questions that were raised regarding the ownership and maintenance responsibilities of property adjacent to the Fox Chase subdivision at the western boundary of the city. Three questions was apparently too tough a task to ask of the city. I appeared before the city council on October 21st of 202024, and again on August 4th of this year, 2025, and then again on August 20th of 2025. This time tonight is my fourth appearance with the same simple, straightforward request that falls within the city's purview and responsibilities. My request is, quote, that the city council direct the city's code compliance office to determine whether the owner of the property in question to determine whether the owner of the property in question, city property at the western boundary of Fox Chase, is in compliance with City Code 6.220." I will read that City Code, Chapter 6, 6.220, nuisances and noxious vegetation. The owner, person in possession, or agent of the owner of any lot, tract, or parcel, improved or unimproved, shall cut and remove and keep cut and remove therefrom and from the half of the street or streets abutment of property, all weeds and other noxious vegetation, and all dead bushes, dead trees, stumps, and anything likely to cause a fire. That question would be satisfied with a yes or no response. Is a property owner in compliance of City Code? To this date, I have not gotten a yes or no response from city staff and I've not had any, I've had very little response from city council except for Councillor Cunningham finding out why there has been no response from city staff for these four inquiries over the past 14 months. An answer of yes, the property owner is in full compliance with City Code, would readily resolve the request. So it would be quite reasonable to assume that the city has, that the answer that the city is so very reluctant to provide is very likely no, the property is not in compliance with City Code. Why has city staff failed to provide an answer to this simple code compliance question? Is it because the property is property of the city of Wilsonville? Might there be a conflict of interest because the property is the city of Wilsonville? Might the city be favoring a particular property owner, the city of Wilsonville? Would such an action be upholding the council's goals of equity? Is this a situation where the city sees themselves above the laws and ordinance and statutes?
Mr. Wortman? I'm sorry to, do you have that in writing?
I do.
Could you submit that maybe? Because I have to cut you off. Your minute over and I have, we have other things to do. But is that okay? If we can submit a copy of that?
I have concluded my response for tonight. Once again, I await the response of the city or of city councillors who have largely ignored this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. David Mock.
Mayor and councillor, I'm Dave Mock, a Wilsonville resident whose address is on the record. I would like to address the proposed Wilsonville Town Center Urban Renewal Project. There are two choices when it comes to determining property taxes. Increase them or increase the tax base. Herein lies one of the beauties of urban renewal using tax increment financing. It does the latter, increasing the tax base usually by multiples, not just nudges, thereby keeping taxes lower than they would likely be otherwise. As a counter to raising property taxes, the use of urban renewal provides a clear benefit where it's utilized. Another big benefit of urban renewal is its positive impact on blight. Property sitting empty and disrepair, not updated, or an eyesore. Urban renewal is the answer to blight. In fact, it's one of its primary purposes, turning underused land into productive property. Urban renewal often involves building unseen infrastructure for private developers then to build out or finish what is seen above ground. Urban renewal captures tax revenue from new development and channels it forward. A virtuous loop. Tax increment financing does not take away funding from schools. The state backstops tax revenue for schools that is frozen by an urban renewal district. Also, tax liability is not transferred to existing taxpayers to make up for frozen tax revenue. When a project sunsets, the increased tax revenue generated by urban renewal district flows to the entire region. Clackamas County has many examples where this has occurred. The Sunrise Corridor where the tax base has doubled. Clackamas Town Center where 177 million became 700 million. Oregon City's Hilltop Neighborhood whose assessed value increased 1,100% in its redeveloped downtown. Lake Oswego's Central Core. Camby, where not only parks, recreation, and parking were built, but so too was an industrial park, creating higher-paying jobs. Then there's Wilsonville itself. Old Town's assessed value has increased tenfold. Villabon's $40 million in infrastructure, brought in over half a billion in private development. The East Side Project created over 3,000 high-paying tech jobs and added 225 high-value acres to the tax rolls. There's a lot, that's a lot of property assessment adding value to the tax base of these communities. In all likelihood, these projects would not have been built and the tax base not expanded without tax increment financing. I'm going to need 10 more seconds. Leaving those committees vulnerable to blight, rising taxes, and less services. The Town Center Project is a generational opportunity to transform existing blight into a vibrant, people-centered space for dining, shopping, recreating, all the things we just heard about. Generational opportunities are just that and not to be missed. Building anything less than a visionary mecca, a community magnet for people, is a wasted opportunity that will result in higher property taxes for everyone, weaker schools, and a less vital city. Thank you.
Mark Kokonowski. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
I'm Mark Kokonowski. My name should be on file and all my contact information. But wanted to give a heads up and a positive here with my year and a half of knowing a homeless guy and some city of Wilsonville funding that I heard of and heart of the city. About a year and a half ago, I met a homeless guy, I'll call him John Doe, about 64 years old. Met him in the restroom of, by the Vietnam Memorial there. And talkative guy, him, not me. And he told me his situation. He was very social, very polite. When I came out of the restroom, he said, oh, you need the sink? He was brushing his teeth that day or something. And I just felt something. So I asked him, I said, why are you homeless? Or I said, what do you do with your laundry? Because I didn't smell him or anything, but I just had some empathy towards him. And between that, a little bit more conversation, and him telling me the lesson he's learned being homeless, that he keeps everything now in three garbage bags in three different areas in case one-third of his property gets stolen. So let's speed this up a little bit. I went back and checked with my boss, my wife, and I offered to do him laundry. So a year and a half flies and that's where we are today. So every week or two, I'll do laundry. If I haven't heard from him for two or three weeks, hello, John Doe, I smell you from across town. Let me come trade laundry with you. But anyways, his housing situation when I met him was under a parked trailer. So a few months there, then he got shuffled over to Sherry's between a wall and a bush. And then, then they made it a gated community, which was pretty nice. Then they put a lock and chain on it. So he got ousted there. Perfect timing. A long-time friend gave him a 20-year-old vehicle. And after a little time there, he, it broke down, the serpentine belt needed repair. And he was in collaboration with Heart of the City. And I told him about some money that was mentioned by three ladies in a session here. And so he communicated with Heart of the City and got money to repair his truck and at least he can move it and dodge the tow truck out in front of Safeway or wherever. Once it was towed up one day and they wouldn't put it down until he paid $200 and a coworker helped pay that. But the gist of this is, is in two weeks from now, he might be in an apartment with a buddy scraping it by. So he'll be taken off the homeless list, I hope. Whether I do laundry or not, or if I'm fired, I don't know. But I just wanted to really thank the Heart of the City. Holy cow, that Sandy lady over there could communicate with him. Paige is now, Sandy's gone. Paige is in communication and Lynn, the boss over there. But thanks for the Clackamas County monies. I won't point anyone out, but that monies has come to a little bit of good use. Just in summary, though, after meeting him, he's a decent guy and I have a different perspective of the homeless people. And it's a tough battle. I'll tell you that. So, but do what you can. If there's any more volunteers for laundry, I'll find some receivers of it for you as well. Bye. Thanks.
Kate Greenfield.
Kate Greenfield, my address is on file. I was going to make a brief comment tonight on why Wilsonville is so well-governed and I don't feel that I need to say anything more. So, thank you.
Andrew Engel.
This will be a bit technical. I'll try to keep everybody awake. Good name, good evening. My name is Andrew Engel. My address is on file. Mayor, councillors, thank you for your time. I'm privileged to speak to you, but I hope my fellow citizens also take interest. At last council, I expressed concerns about the initiative petition that would require ballot approval of urban renewal plans and amendments. Looking into state law and city history solidified my concerns. Initiative supporters have said that the Urban Renewal Agency could increase a renewal plan's area and/or indebtedness up to 20% under ORS 457. This is inaccurate. ORS 457 states that increase in land area exceeding 1% of the original area and any increase in indebtedness are substantial changes requiring the same approval as the initial plan. We can also check the petitioner's claims against historic test cases. The West Side Urban Renewal Plan developed Villabon, improved Old Town, and turned a $15 million, $50 million investment into an $800 million assessed value. Let me review two amendments to that plan. Urban Renewal Ordinance 174 added 62 acres to an existing 394 acres plan. City council adopted ordinance 656 in December 2008 approving the addition. This substantial change increased the tax base to keep the plan from stalling under the economic conditions of 2008. Under petitioner's initiative, this would have been on the ballot in 2010, at least a year and a half delay. Urban Renewal Ordinance 253 in October 2014 added 9 million in indebtedness to the 40 million, not inflation-adjusted, authorized in 2003. This indebtedness was required to fulfill city's contractual obligations to developers and intergovernmental agreements. Something about sprinklers in Villabon. This substantial amendment was approved under council's adoption of the 2014 Urban Renewal Strategic Plan. Under petitioner's initiative, this would have been on the ballot in 2016, at least a year and a half delay. Finally, in my research, I enjoyed reading Urban Renewal Resolution 006. This May 1993 change to the Year 2000 Plan was a substantial change because the original plan allowed acquiring land for a pool but did not authorize acquiring additional open space for unspecified purposes. The resolution authorized acquiring the site of the Steinbarger Barn and Marassi Plaza. And the timing of the acquisition was driven by when the sellers were ready to sell. Can you imagine not having Marassi Plaza because we had to wait a year for the election to approve the change? These substantial amendments needed council approval and would, under the proposed initiative, need ballot approval. It's reasonable to send initial adoption of an urban renewal plan to a ballot, but it's unworkable to ask voters to constantly micromanage an inherently administrative process. I hope petitioners withdraw their current initiative and propose a properly functional one in its place. Portraying it as benign and simply supporting this status quo is a smokescreen. Thank you.
Kyle Bunch.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. Kyle Bunch, my address is on the speaker card. This will be my final time coming before you on this matter. I didn't plan to speak again, but over the past month, the number of people who have reached out to me quietly, privately, and fearfully has made it impossible for me to stay silent. These are not political operatives, not activists, not people with agendas. These are Wilsonville business owners, Wilsonville educators, city staff, neighbors, and the mayor's own HOA, other elected officials, even people who volunteered on the mayor's campaign. Each one of them had some version of the same quote from someone who works in a close circle to the mayor. "I'm afraid of saying anything because of who my boss is and his connection to the mayor." One longtime resident wrote to me, "I really appreciate you standing up for our community and for all of us who feel like we can't. Things always take time to work themselves out. I believe in karma." People are paying attention now and we know we're not alone. I had a very negative professional experience with him. I was paying him. I can only imagine how he treats someone who isn't. Everything I've heard so far aligns with my experience. These aren't isolated stories. They're a pattern. And the reason these individuals won't come forward themselves is not because they don't care about Wilsonville. It's because they're scared. Scared of retaliation, scared of losing their jobs, scared of being targeted the way former councillor Dunwell was targeted. I came here weeks ago asking for accountability. I came back asking for courage. And tonight, I stand here for one last time because the silence in this chamber has grown louder than any apology that might still come. It's clear the mayor has no intention of acknowledging what happened, let alone apologizing for it. And yet, across our community, there are leaders from every political perspective, including others behind the dais, who are ready to work hard to rebuild trust, to bridge divides, to repair the damage caused by an entrenchment of deep ideological figureheads in the city. But what the work cannot begin until there's reconciliation, until there's truth, until there's a willingness to take responsibility for harm done. If the mayor's not willing to participate in work, if he cannot own his actions, cannot repair the breach, and cannot lead in a way that brings the community together, then he needs to let somebody else step up and help. Wilsonville deserves leadership that heals, not leadership that harms. I am committed to that work. Many others are committed to that work, but it cannot move forward unless you're willing to join us. While this is the last time I will testify on this matter, that does not mean the conversation ends here. I'm passing the torch to every Wilsonville resident who has written me, called me, stopped me in a parking lot, or whispered their story because they were too afraid to say it out loud. Your voice matters. Your experience matters and you're not alone. If you've been affected, if you've witnessed behavior that does not reflect the values of the city, if you have a story that deserves to be heard, I invite you, when you're ready, in your own way to step forward, share your experience, and add your voice. Continue this work. We stand with you. We have your back and your story has power. Thank you.
George Dunn.
Good afternoon, evening, ladies and gentlemen. You'll have to forgive me. I'm tired. I have a seven-month-old that keeps me up now. I really appreciate some of the testimonies tonight. It's a lot of why I'm here to speak. You know, as someone still in their twenties with a lot of friends and family in their twenties, it's really hard out there. It's challenging right now. I personally have friends that have had to live in a van with their mother and their daughter and who are working full-time, struggling to make it by, and have to move their car three times in the night because, so they don't have to wake up to an officer knocking on the window. It's incredibly hard circumstances to live under, to get out of. I lost my best friend who lived in this community because he had lost a roommate in this situation and he had to move out of town and ended up homeless, living in a tent in his aunt's backyard for months. It's a hard time and across our community, you have hard-working men and women, our neighbors, friends, families, who are doing everything. neighbors, friends, families, who are doing everything we ask of them. They work long hours, often multiple jobs, yet their wages fail to keep pace with the rising cost of living. Employers are cutting hours, keeping them just below the 30 hours so they don't have to pay health insurance, so they don't have to pay sick leave. Rents are climbing faster than paychecks, leaving families reliant on food programs, and too many are facing unthinkable being homeless despite their relentless labor. I consider myself a proud American, and this is not the American promise. The dignity of work must mean more than endless struggle. Patriotism is not only about flags and ceremonies, it's about ensuring that every person who contributes to our community can secure life's most basic necessities: a roof over their head, food on the table, and hope for their children's future. The Town Center Plan is not just a development project. It is an act of stewardship. It is the tree we plant today so that our grandchildren may sit in the shade tomorrow. It is our chance to build a city that reflects the values we hold dear: fairness, opportunity, and belonging. I plan to spend my life here, and I feel deeply invested in the city's future. I want my child, who will live to see the next century, to inherit a community that is healthy, sustainable, and welcoming. A place where wages keep pace with the cost of living, where housing is attainable, and where opportunity is not reserved for the few but shared by all. We must resist the temptation to preserve privilege at the expense of progress. We need to embrace stewardship. We need to take responsibility not only for ourselves, but for the generations yet to come. If we invest in Town Center with vision and courage, we will leave behind a city improved and thriving, not a hollow shell of nostalgia for a past that never truly existed. So my ask is that you honor the labor of those today by building a future worthy of tomorrow. Thank you.
Jeff Sundell.
Hi, my name's Jeff Sundell. My address is on record. I'm a city Wilsonville resident over in Villabon. One of these days, I need to start preparing some remarks because I've got some very eloquent speakers behind me here. Congratulations to all of you. I came to listen to the shareout on Town Center Plan today, and I was not disappointed. I haven't been coming to these city meetings as long as Doris Weyler, but I agree, that was probably the best presentation I've seen, and it was really insightful. I really appreciate the questions from city council, especially the question about what do we do next? I'm excited for the next steps on that process, whatever they may be. And I'm excited. I think we've got a really cool plan in place right now. I think we've got a good starting place. It gives us a vision on which to build and to modify, and I think we need to modify it. It sounds like there's a lot of really great energy from various sides of our community that want to participate in refining the plan and figuring out, how do we make this a plan that we all really want to build? So I'm here for it, and I want to make it the best we can make it for everyone. Thank you.
Is that everybody? Okay. No one's on Zoom? All right. Now, let's turn to council comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. Council President Barry.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody that comes to the city council meetings. I know that a lot of you come on a regular basis, and it's really important. I think that's what makes a city thrive, is when we have all our citizens participate. And so, thank you again for taking your time and providing your comments because we are listening. We really care, just like you care. So, let's see. Recently, I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee meeting that was on Wednesday, November 19th. The mayor was on the panel, and so I was in the background listening. The main topics was the TriMet Transit Survey and the early results in regional housing coordination strategy that the area is all working on. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Tourism Promotion Committee meeting, and I'm looking forward to the tree lighting ceremony. I hope that many of you will also be there. So anyway, I'm going to keep my remarks short because it's a long meeting, but do take the time to read the Boons Ferry Messenger. There's so much good information in here, and if you want to learn more about our police chief that's retiring and our new police chief that's coming in, and just so many activities, lots of good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cunningham.
I'll keep my remarks brief. It's getting late. It's actually been a quiet couple of weeks. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope everyone had a good opportunity to be with some family and friends and share a meal together, and that you had the time to reflect on what that holiday meant. I know I did. And I just thank God every day for what we have and the opportunities that we have. And I look forward to continuing to work on those, and I'm sure that we're all going to figure this out. That's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chevlin.
Thank you. Today, we celebrate Rosa Parks. Today is Rosa Parks Day. 70 years ago today, December 1st, 1955, she did not give up her seat on the bus. And think about how that changed our country. So I just honor Rosa Parks today. I have other things to report that I'll save for next time, just in the interest of time. I will say that I did meet with Senator Courtney Neron Mislin on November 23rd. She congratulated us on approving our climate action plan for the city. She did ask about gas leaf blowers. Had we outlawed those? I said, "No, that's not the intention of the Climate Action Plan." The Climate Action Plan was based more or focused more on incentivizing people to make good choices about their future. But I told her that one of the things that I would personally be interested in doing is watching the ban on leaf blowers in the city of Portland, if any of you have been following that. The ban is a phase-in or a phase-out, if you will, phasing in electric leaf blowers and phasing out gas leaf blowers begins in January 1st of 2026, but it's a two-year plan. And it's also based on incentivizing workers and employers that need leaf blowers, so that they can be improved in that period of time and be more powerful. But what they're starting is, is that the gas-powered leaf blowers will only be allowed in 2026 to be used from October through December in '26, '27 going forward. So it's just a way for people to kind of get used to it. I thought that was an interesting plan, but I didn't commit that we were outlawing leaf blowers. So please make sure that doesn't make it to the social media pages. Anyhow, I continue to meet with members of our community for coffee. I find those very valuable, so please reach out to me, express your concerns, your ideas. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Skoll.
Okay, I'll keep this pretty short. I continue with my onboarding activities. I met with the IT department to understand the city's technology roadmap. Had an opportunity to sit down with the two police chiefs. It was a fun meeting. So look forward to working with them on that transfer. Set with the team at the library, and I find the library to be an extra special place. They've got a lot going on over there that most libraries don't. And I was pretty amazed to see some of the programs that they were into. And I plan on going back and visiting with them and helping them out. Spent a lot of my time here reviewing, getting up to date and reviewing the budget, getting up to date and reviewing the Town Center Plan. I did have a session with the Finance Director and went through probably my third educational session on urban development, and so I'm getting up to speed on that. And met with the operations team today and talked with them and have a good understanding of the city operations. So onboarding is getting through that, or I'm working my way through that. I have one more meeting left after, I think, 14 or 15, and I'll be working with the community development people next week, team next week, and getting up to speed on that. And then, just a reminder to the mayor, I still need to talk with you about meeting assignments.
I think, can we put that on, should we do probably best right after the holidays in the first January and just reassess? Is that okay with council to reconsider? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Skoll. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution Number 3223, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing acquisition of property related to construction of the Beckman Creek Flow Mitigation Project, CIP Number 7068, and amending Resolution Number 3167. Resolution Number 3225, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the South Metro Area Regional Transit Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. Resolution Number 3227, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with RA Gray Construction to construct the Elgson Reservoir and Level C Reservoir Fall Protection and Security Improvement Project, CIP 1152 and 1153, in minutes of the November 17, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you. Council President Barry can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to approve the consent agenda has been, to adopt the consent agenda has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. There's no new business, but we're turning to continuing business. We will now take up Ordinance Number 900 on second reading. Will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 900, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville implementing an administrative warrants process by amending Chapter 1 of the Wilsonville Code to add Sections 1.100 through 1.180.
I call to order the Wilsonville City Council, the second reading on Ordinance Number 900, has been read by the city attorney. Does any member of council have any questions for staff or the city attorney on Ordinance Number 900? Seeing none? Do I have any discussion at all? Okay. Do I have a motion on Ordinance Number 900?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 900 on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we enact Ordinance Number 900. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Councilor Chevlin?
Aye.
Council President Barry?
Aye.
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Skoll?
Aye.
Mayor O'Neil?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. With that, is there any city manager business this evening? Okay? Any legal business this evening?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Okay. The city council meeting is adjourned at 9:23 PM.